Let's get this started. So we are going to get this started. It is 7:04. It is April the 8th, 2024, and we are starting the council meeting. And we will start with... Oh, is... Closed session? Is there a closed session report? No? But that's my... Oh, sorry. We did have a closed session. And attorney, is there a closed session report?
No reportable action.
Thank you very much. We are now in regular session. And roll call, please. Emily.
Councilmember Bowles.
Here.
Councilmember Big Stick.
Present.
Councilmember Beer.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer.
Present.
And Mayor Vodderlaus.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer is participating in the meeting remotely by audio/visual teleconference in accordance with the Brown Act. In accordance with the Brown Act, the teleconference location has been identified in the agenda for this meeting. All votes for this meeting will be taken by verbal roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I can't undo my... I can't start my video, though. It says the host has stopped it.
Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer, do you want to try again?
There. Okay. Oh, there's two of me.
Were you able to hear the proceeding up until now?
Yes, perfectly.
Okay. Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
I do.
Has the agenda been posted at the location where you are?
Yes, on the front door of the building and outside the conference room, which the front door of the conference room is open.
Mm-hmm. Is the location where you are reasonably accessible to the public, such that any member of the public could participate in a teleconference from your location if they wish to do so?
Yes.
And lastly, is there any member of the public there with you who would like to participate in the public common portion of this meeting or otherwise address any agenda item for this meeting?
Not at this time. However, the door is open and they're more than welcome to arrive at a later time in the meeting.
Okay. Sounds good. Nice to see you. If anybody hasn't done so, please make sure that you put a parking pass, which they are located at the bottom of the stairs, so that you don't receive a ticket. We want everybody to come to these meetings. So now I will... Sorry. I will read the land acknowledgement. The city of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatouxalone people, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Ramatouxalone people for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth as the indigenous protectors of this land, and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramatouxalone have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as caretakers of this place. As well as for all people who reside in their traditional territory, we affirm their sovereign rights as first people and wish to pay our respects to their ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatouxalone people. And now I'm going to lead you in the pledge. And I already asked for the closed session report. So now we have a special presentation from Peninsula Clean Energy. So if you'll all go to the podium, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you so much for having me this evening. My name is Shawn Marshall. I am the new chief executive officer of Peninsula Clean Energy, a position that I have been in since last July. So coming up on almost a year, and it's glad to say that it has gone by quickly and it has gone well so far. So before I dive into tonight's presentation, I wanted to introduce a couple of PCE staff with me. Kirsten Andrew Schwind, who I think many of you know. Kirsten is our director for community outreach and climate equity. Thank you very much. I don't know how I could forget that. Mark Hirschman went outside to help me out with the parking pass, so I will introduce him when he comes back in. He is the head of our... He's the director of our government affairs department. I'd also like to acknowledge the participation and leadership of council member Tiger Jazz Big Stick, who has served steadfastly on our board of directors, always present, always asking astute questions, always having great ideas. So I do want to say thank you so much, Tiger, for your participation on our board. I also do want to acknowledge council member Bowles for your service as council member Big Stick's alternate. And also, Mary, I'm sorry that I don't know your last name, but I... Thank you. I know that you served on our board as well for some years. So lots of participation. I'm very excited that I have a lot to update you all on. So we will tee off here with a short video. And before we get to that, I do want to say that for right now, providing affordable rates to our customers is job number one for Peninsula Clean Energy. It is ridiculously expensive to live in California right now. It is not helped one bit by our utility rates. I think you all are aware that we have nothing to say about what PG&E charges for its rates for gas and distribution of the power, transmission, and all of the other ancillary services. We are... We set rates as a board of directors for the electric generation portion of your bill, and we are doing as much as we possibly can to keep those rates low. The good news is that PCE is good at many things. We can walk and chew gum. And so we are providing both affordable rates and cleaner energy despite the tough inflationary times that we're in. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and see if this will work. Can you help me get the video going?
Peninsula Clean Energy was founded in 2016 with a clear goal: to provide clean energy, lower rates, and to combat climate change. As a nonprofit energy provider, I'm proud to say that we've managed to slash emissions by 94% while at the same time increasing renewables and maintaining electric generation rates at a minimum 5% below PG&E. That's over $100 million back to our customers and our communities since 2016.
In the past year, we've secured our largest wind contract to date, adding over 200 megawatts of clean energy into our resource portfolio. In 2024, we expect to bring online five new projects, adding over 300 megawatts of new capacity onto the grid. This will get us within striking distance of meeting our 100% renewable goal.
Peninsula Clean Energy is showing that we don't have to make a choice between affordable rates and cleaner energy.
We don't have to satisfy corporate shareholders. Our customers are our shareholders.
Peninsula Clean Energy was started to combat climate change, but now it's so much more. The true value of community choice is that it's local. It means going to your street fair and seeing us at a booth and asking a question about your energy bill. It's also when you go to plug in your EV and seeing a charger provided by Peninsula Clean Energy. Peninsula Clean Energy serves all of our customers in our community with different language outreach and programs for all income levels.
A lot of the programs that come from Peninsula Clean Energy help our communities to take part because many times the communities that we serve are left out with the policies that comes down to address climate change and greenhouse gas emissions.
We're helping the community install thousands of chargers, including at hard-to-reach places like apartment buildings.
So with the Inflect Clean Energy's EV-ready program, this has been so affordable. We're at 29 outlets installed, and the cost has been basically nothing. And for mom-and-pop housing providers, it's really, really important to us because we don't have a lot of capital to spend.
The average charger in our program is being installed for about $4,000, much less than the average of $10,000 to $18,000 in other programs.
We are your local partner in building a sustainable community. Peninsula Clean Energy remains steadfast in our commitment to power our communities, combat climate change, and provide affordable clean energy to the customers we proudly serve.
Okay. We do proudly serve our customers. So thank you for watching that. I have a couple slides that I am going to run through here, and then happy to take any questions that you may have. All right. So I mentioned at the top of the presentation that we're doing everything we can to keep our rates affordable for our customers. And what that means is that we are holding our rates steady. The board made a decision in January to keep... to freeze our rates at 2023 levels, which means that our customers are saving right now between 10% and 15% on their energy generation charges. We are also proud to say that at last week's board meeting, and council member Big Stick was there, the board took action to shift the way that we are rate-setting to ensure that we are covering our revenue requirements and meeting our minimum obligations for a reserve account. But then after that, any excess would be given back to the customer in the form of higher discounts. So our goal really is to do more than the 5% that we have done traditionally since our launch. You will note here on the chart on the far right a fairly substantial difference in that bar chart. The left is PG&E delivery rates in 2023, and the dark blue are the PG&E delivery rates in this year's bill. So unfortunately, customer bills are still going up despite the fact that we have frozen our rates and slashed our discounts, which is an unfortunate reality. Did also want to update you and let you know that our energy is cleanest. And so when you look at this chart, the black line across the top is the average California power that's running up and down our grid. The light gray line is what PG&E's emissions factor is. These are all emissions factors per year. And then the blue line across the bottom is PCE's EcoPlus product. That is our standard offering to our customers. It is currently 52% renewable and 100% clean. And what you can see is, starting in 2020, we're at nearly zero emissions. We have just a smidge because we do have a little bit of geothermal in our portfolio. We're hoping that the California Energy Commission will reclassify geothermal to be fully renewable and thus zero emissions. But as you can see, we're down here and very clean portfolio. We plan for that to remain throughout. Couple of programs, just to update you. You all know that in addition to power procurement, we have a very robust roster of programs in the areas of transportation, clean buildings, and distributed energy resources. So I'll kick off here with home electrification. And I'm just going to highlight our most popular new program, and that is our 0% loan program. We offer loans to our customers of every income level, so doesn't matter, of $10,000. It's a single-page application. You don't need a credit check. It's very easy. You get approved, and then it is repaid on your bill over the course of five years. You can use that $10,000 or whatever amount that it is you want to do anything related to switching out gas-fired appliances at your home. So it's all part of our effort to electrify and to clean up and make our homes more healthy. We have had more than 2,500 rebates go out the door to support electrification, as well as we are launching later this year and early next a one-stop-shop electrification support for our customers because it's not... It is not an easy thing to do with all the different moving parts and different rebates and stuff that are out there. Next is supporting electric transportation. So we have a couple of programs. The most popular one by far is our EV-ready program. That is where PCE will go in and do all the charging infrastructure in order to make sure that we can accommodate the number of EVs on the road. So we are focusing a lot of our effort right now in apartment buildings and, you know, harder-to-plug-in places. And so you saw on the video, that was one of our customers. His costs upfront were almost nothing, and I think he put in almost 30 chargers in his garage for his tenants to be able to charge overnight. So we're doing a lot of that right now. We also have a used EV rebate. That is an income-qualified rebate. And then we are... We have a momentary pause on our e-bikes program to make sure that we are meeting our customer needs, but that'll be back up and running here shortly. This is some good news for you all. We also spend a lot of time partnering with our local government agencies like the city of Pacifica. We have funding to support local government climate action plans. We do that in collaboration with the county. We recently... Sorry. We also have a couple of what we call GOV-EV and GOV-PV programs. So GOV-EV is supporting fleets to meet California fuel standards, and we have a very active solar plus storage on public buildings, GOV-PV. And you all have a project, I believe, at your community center that will soon be underway and hopefully going live later this year. We also have a couple of new grant programs that council member Big Stick is aware of. One is our local government electrification program. That is a loan and a grant combination that requires a 25% match by the city. You can use it for any kind of electrification measure or clean energy measure that you might need in the city. And we also have a member agency grant program that allocated funds out of our excess revenue exercise. And the city of Pacifica was allocated just over $475,000. That can be used in any way that is consistent with PCE's mission. Could be electrification. It could be a sustainability effort. That really is meant to be flexible funds within the sphere of sustainability and clean energy. So we encourage your staff to work with our team. It's a simple application to get that money in hand. So just briefly, what is PCE doing to support Pacifica? So here are a couple of quick facts. Pacifica has nearly 15,000 customers of PCE within your city limits and a 96% participation rate. That is fantastic, and we thank you for being good ambassadors for us and helping people understand the value that we bring. Since our launch in 2016, your constituents have saved over 3.9 million. This was written a while ago, so I'm going to ballpark it and say that you're probably up to about 4.2 million in customer rate savings as of today. We've already talked about the solar project underway. Kirsten reminded me earlier that we are a sponsor for this year's EcoFest, which I think is next week? Whale Fest. Sorry. That sounds like fun, I must say. And then also, we have been sponsors the last couple of years for EV... Your EV Expo that happens in the fall. Hold on one second. I got to back... Go back and look at something. Okay. My pages got mixed up here. So hold on one second. I'm sorry about that. Okay. I also am just going to cheat over here and look over here. So you can see that we also have a number of EV chargers that have gone in and 39 more in the pipeline. We have seven youth climate ambassadors that attend your high schools. What PCE does after a year-long program that includes a capstone project, each person that finishes that receives, I think it's 500 or 550, as a stipend for the student's good work. So very active here in Pacifica, and we do appreciate that. Okay. I'm almost done, I promise. New developments. So hopefully you all are aware that the board and council member Big Stick sat on this committee of our surplus funds committee, where the board then approved 68 million in a community reinvestment package that included a whole bunch of things, including a $300 rebate to our Carefera income-qualified customers. That came out just at the holiday season, so we hope that people needed it at that time and were able to benefit from that. We also allocated more money to the member agency energy grants that I recently just mentioned. We also allocated money to our low-income whole-home upgrade program. We have battery storage for schools and the like. There are a number... I think there are 11 different projects that we allocated funding to. So that was a very exciting thing that happened earlier this year. We also have included additional funding to do a turnkey electrification. That's a high-touch program that's going to help people. We're going to hold their hand through the process, help them understand all the different rebates and how they stack, and help hopefully find contractors that are well-qualified that can work with us to get the projects done on time and on budget. I did also want to mention that as part of last week's board evening, it was a long meeting, but we took a big step back and said, "Let's revisit what our stated goal is for 2025." This was a goal that the board adopted through a strategic planning process back in 2018. And so the goal stated that we would provide 100% renewable energy on an annual basis by next year. Right now, we are at 68% renewable energy. Last year's reporting was at 52. Currently, we're at 68. So we went out to market, and we looked at what would it cost for us to get there? And the truth of the matter was, it was going to be on the order of $85 to $86 million in order to close that gap, to reach 100% renewable next year. And those are not new projects. Those are renewable energy credits. There's a whole nother story with that. It's all fine. But at the end of the day, the board decided that it was time to kind of look at the trade-offs here and to instead back off from the goal of next year and, over the next several years, continue to progressively move toward 100% renewable portfolio while also maintaining low customer rates. So do want to just let you know that it was a hard discussion to have, but we think the correct one in the economic environment that we find ourselves in. So did want to let you know that. Last couple things. Caltrain will be joining our electric service this fall. We're very excited about that. They will be taking 100% renewable product. And we are embarking on a way of doing business that puts the customer in front, which is part of the reason why we're making some hard decisions to promote affordability for the time being and then continually progress upward on renewable. So with that, I will say, from our team to yours, we so enjoy working with you. We look forward to a continued partnership, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Are there questions from council?
Thank you so much for your presentation. I love seeing your team. That was great.
Aren't they fab?
Yeah.
They're the best. There were a few missing, but we're growing a bit. But that was, I think, in December.
I just have a couple of questions. One, you mentioned that there's $475,000 available to Pacifica. Did I hear that correctly?
You did.
And so... And our next steps would be to get that?
So go on to... So you're... Either your director of public works or city manager, whoever it would be assigned to, just go to our website under Commercial and then Local Government. Click on Local Government, and you'll find the list of all the cities. And the money was allocated based on load size and customer count, whichever was the greater. So it was... You'll see a range there, just depending on how large your city is. And then what they need to do is download the application. And then what happens is that you just do a quick project plan. We will give you 50% of the money upfront, and then when the project is complete, the remainder... remaining 50% will come.
Wonderful. Thank you. I appreciate that. And then you also mentioned the Carefair, the income qualifying. And do you partner with our core service agencies to get folks connected to that?
We do.
Program? Okay, great.
We do. Kirsten could probably read you chapter and verse about that. But we have many, many nonprofit partners who can reach out to different cultural communities, different neighborhoods. So yes, we do.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you again for your presentation and for all you do, not just to provide clean power, but to help our community provide cleaner power in their homes, too. You know, with appliance rebates and so forth, you're helping climate change as well as our health. And it's amazing to me to see how far we've come since 2016. And it's amazing to me to see how far we've come since 2016, right? And sort of breaking that monopoly of the big providers of our power and how much more is really possible to do with less money, better service, you know, better environment. So thank you for your leadership and all that Peninsula Clean Energy does. I had another question about Pacifica. I heard you say 39 more EV chargers are coming. And can you tell us more about that? Is that already in the plan in terms of?
Yes. I couldn't tell you where. I can get back to you. I can check with Philip, who heads up that program, and get back to you all tomorrow.
Okay.
But there are 30 more that have been reserved, not through the city, but likely through, you know, different affordable housing or multifamily housing, or in some cases, public EV charging. So if you like, I can, we can follow up with Councilmember Big Stick.
Sure.
To share that information and then-
Location and timeline. Yeah, I think just having only three in our city that's so spread out, I think that's gonna be a huge help.
And the 39 I know have been reserved for you. I just don't know when.
Right. Okay. And then I'm just curious what your thoughts are about individual solar installations on houses, you know, now with the CPUCs changing their payback methods. Are you seeing a drop? Is that something that we can do anything to change at this point?
We like to use this term, right sizing. So the NEM 1 and NEM 2 programs, which were the original solar incentive programs in the state that PCE has participated in, were really designed to incentivize and accelerate solar adoption on homeowner rooftops and commercial rooftops. And we've come into a time, so maybe that's been going on now for 10-plus years, probably 15 maybe. And so what's happened now is that we've, we're built out in a way. And so there's plenty of solar on the grid. The shortfall now is battery storage. And so there's a, there's gotta be a catch-up that's happening. So whether or not you agree with the terms of what they're calling the net billing tariff or NEM 3, the terms are definitely not as advantageous for homeowners. And it, in a way, it has a stifling effect because it's not as beneficial economically. But the idea here is that rather than oversize your solar and then sell the excess power off, that you would actually right-size it, in which case then you wouldn't be out any money doing that. So we, it has not been implemented as yet. We are following the kind of PG&E structure for now, gonna try it out for a year and then revisit it and see if we want to do something different next year.
Right. And I think that's where the batteries are really key, because, I mean, I've got solar that offsets all my electrical use, but I do sell it. I don't use it all during the day, and then I need it at night, right? So you're, even if you're right sizing, you're still having time of day.
That's right.
Shifts.
Yep. Batteries are sort of the next frontier, I believe, for a lot of us in this business.
Right. Right. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
I'm not sure if, thank you for your presentation. I'm not sure if PCE is the right organization. Maybe you could point me to if it isn't. We experience occasionally significant power outages on the coast. And when we had one recently, there was a big opportunity, I'm not sure if PG&E provided them, somebody provided a bunch of little battery packs that people obtained through our public library. And I'm wondering about the possibility of creating an ongoing program for that in Pacifica and other coastal areas where we do experience these outages that are multi-days at times. And we do our best with the community center and the libraries to be comfort stations and places people can come and charge their devices so they can work and do school and things like that. But I'm just wondering about building resiliency in our coastal areas, if there are any programs like that or support that PCE can provide.
It's a great question. And I don't know that the ones you're referencing came from PCE. Did you, were you able to keep them or were they loners? Do you remember?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. I think they were able to keep them. I know they blew off the shelf and were gone pretty quickly.
Yeah, I'm sure. We did have a program for our medically vulnerable customers during COVID and during the PSPS Public Safety Power Shut-Off Events. And that, they flew off the shelf, same. So what the status is now is that our programs team is doing some analysis on which coastside neighborhoods, including the one you're in, which coastside neighborhoods are most affected by power outages, for how long, how many customers live there, so that we can get pretty granular on figuring out a program just like what you are talking about, which would be, and I don't think, we haven't designed the whole thing. My vote is that it would not be a loner program. That's just a lot to administer, and you need them. You need them when you need them. So I don't know exactly what the status is on that. In fact, I'll go ask tomorrow when I see our director of programs. But it is coming back, and we do plan on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Big Stick.
And Mayor Protem, while we were having those budget surplus committee meetings, I did bring it up for discussion. And I have been in discussion with County Supervisor Ray Mueller about various approaches we could be taking, especially with working with our partners in PCE. So those conversations are ongoing. I'm acutely aware, especially when I'm working at the Safeway and I have Montero residents coming in for a week buying dry ice up. I have a very visceral appreciation for, especially on the other side of the tunnel, what's going on when there it's a power outage. I mostly want to say thank you. I'm so happy to have members of my PCE family here tonight. And I, one of the coolest parts of my job is I get to hang out with you people every month. And, you know, as I go along, I start learning more and more about this very technical industry and hopefully participating in a way that's more and more helpful. But in the meantime, it's extraordinary how much brain power goes into everything. And that staff, that's our amazing staff, and it's also the representatives from all over San Mateo County. And it's all people who really care about doing the right thing for the environment in such a way. I've been charmed by our turnkey program, which will be coming out shortly. I've been kind of working with Rafael Reyes to try and have an understanding of exactly what somebody who's not a homeowner needs to go through if they're to coordinate with a landlord in terms of electrification. And I'm so happy that this program is coming shortly so that anyone could call a number and it's all laid out right there. And so really good things are coming. And I guess the one lingering question, if you could tell us a little bit about 24/7 energy. And, you know, it's, it's an ambitious goal and one that is not going to be hammered out in full quite yet. And yet, we're making strides toward the notion that every minute of the day, your energy is coming from somewhere that is purely clean. If you could tell us a little bit about what we're shooting for.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you. Great question. So we are shooting, our big audacious goal is to be 100% renewable on a 99% time coincident basis, meaning 99% of the time out of a 24/7 day, our customers will be served by 100% renewable energy. The way you achieve that is through signing long-term power purchase agreements that typically range from 15 to 20, maybe sometimes 25 years. And when you sign those contracts, let's say it's a wind contractor, solar, now battery storage is really necessary. When you sign those, the developer can take that contract to the bank to get the financing to effectuate new power being put into the ground in order to power our needs on a 24/7 basis. The trick here, and I don't have the slides with me, but the trick here is that you have to balance the type of power, because the wind doesn't blow all night and the sun doesn't shine at night and all that. So it's a very, very technical approach. It's not actually ready yet in terms of the way the California grid or even the Western grid accounts for clean energy. So there's a little catch-up to do. But the idea is that if you look at a slice of our day, 24/7, any time of the year, it'll be entirely green. It won't have any red spikes for when we have to use natural gas, which is a baseload, a baseload power source. So originally, you know this, Councilmember Tiger Jazz, the board back in that 2018 timeframe had set a goal of wanting to be 24/7 hourly by 2025. And even when I first came on by last year, it just, it was clear that that was not gonna happen. And not just for price, but because there just wasn't enough diversity and available power in the marketplace to get into those long-term contracts. So we moved the goal out to 2027. That's looking tough, too. So the board will be taking up this matter at its April board meeting in about two weeks. And then we're gonna sort of figure out, we're not gonna lose the goal. We will never lose the goal. It's just a function of how, what's practical and what is the quickest we can get there without jeopardizing affordability and agency economic health.
Learning so much about procuring power and what it takes to get new projects off the ground that then contribute to our portfolio that will someday make this dream a reality. And that, in the meantime, we are slowly walking toward, and with every procurement, we get closer to that dream. It really is humbling being a part of that process and learning the intricacies of how that goes. So thank you so much for being here.
You're welcome.
And thank you for your presentation. Not that this is your issue, but I agree with Councilmember Beckmeyer, and I've said it many, many times, until PG&E gets their grids together so that we actually can have power all the time. I only lost power for three days, which was pretty bad for me, three days. But the people down the coast who lost their power for seven to 10 days don't even have the ability to have water because their water is on a pump system. They have absolutely nothing. And until they can get that together, then I can see the electrification, but not until those people have power.
Yeah, fair.
So.
Good feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Hope you all have a lovely evening. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Kirsten.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, do you want to just confirm that there's no public comment on that item?
Oh, are there any public comments? Thank you. I see no public comments. Are there, is there anyone on the phone?
There's one hand raised. I'm not sure if it's for this item, but I can ask them to speak.
Thank you.
They lowered their hand, Mayor.
Okay. So I'll bring that back to council. And we're gonna move on to the consent. And Emily, would you like to read us a statement before we go into the consent calendar?
Yes. Madam Mayor, Consent Calendar, Item Number 13, Mid-Block Crosswalk Safety Improvement Project. For that one, staff is recommending an amendment to the content of the attached resolution to remove the second "now therefore be it resolved" paragraph. That paragraph states, "Now therefore be it resolved that the governing board of the City of Pacifica authorizes entering into the construction contract and agreement for the mid-block crosswalk safety improvement project, and that the persons who are listed below are authorized to sign the project documents for the governing board. This clause was included in error and does not substantively affect the action or resolution. Staff will also correct typographical error in the title of the attached agreement. This item does not need to be pulled from consent, but the motion made should state to approve the consent calendar with item number 13 as amended and recommended by staff."
Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to pull any items from consent?
I would like to pull item 10, but I'm not sure if I have to pull it in order to get the staff report. I just really wanted our community to be able to learn about it firsthand. So should I just pull it?
Yes, you should pull it if you want staff-
I would like to pull item number-
If you want staff to give in a report.
Okay.
You just want to make a comment, you do not need to pull it.
No, I'd like a staff report. Thank you.
Are there any other items that people want to pull? No? Would someone like to make a motion?
Do you need to take a public comment?
Sorry. I was gonna say a public comment. And I do wish to ask a question about an item after a public comment.
Sorry. I'm opening the public comment. Would anyone from the public like to comment on anything on the consent agenda?
Other than item 10.
Other than item 10. And I see no one in the audience, and there's no one on the phone. So I will bring that back to council. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion?
I do have a question to ask on an item before-
A question first.
And then I'll be happy to make a motion if there's no other questions. Although I have a feeling Councilmember Bowles has questions about minutes. Item number six, the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. Could we just, what is that and why are we sending this letter? And specifically, I'm asking this of staff because I think it's really important that we understand why we're transmitting this letter.
Thank you, Councilmember Big Stick. Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager, I can provide a high-level summary of what this Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act is. The League of California Cities, which acts as a lobbying organization for us and tracks legislation, has, is encouraging all cities to look at this and consider an opposition position on this because it will dramatically change the face of the way that the state and local governments, if it were to pass, it would dramatically change the face of the way the state and local governments are able to justify fees and are able to put taxes and revenue measures on the ballot, making it much more difficult. It's akin to a sort of new version of Prop 13 in a way, and making local government funding very difficult, taking control out of local cities to determine what's best for them by making, through many different means, and I won't go into all the details that are in the staff report, but just really significantly impacting local revenues. In addition, the, across the state, hundreds of tax measures that were passed in November of 2022 would be at risk of being repealed unless they met the requirements of this. And that would be a really dramatic impact to many cities across the state. That's a high-level summary of the significance of this. And one of the benefits of the council considering and taking a position on this measure is that then the city's official position will be stated and can be communicated to the electorate in regards to this.
And maybe to get just a touch more granular, what kinds of things do these fees and taxes pay for that might be made more difficult to come by if our ability at the city level is taken away, eroded by this?
Well, it really is a very broad swath of items that could be affected. So for many different types of fees that are in our fee structure, it would not necessarily nullify fees, but it would open up potential legal challenges to those fees, which would be very burdensome.
Like sewer?
Yeah, sewer, you know, other, just, and any-
Road maintenance?
Yep, any kind of fees. And then any kind of tax measure, whether a special tax or a general tax, will have a much higher bar to pass.
I like having roads. I like having firefighters. Thank you.
Water, sewer, libraries.
Sue Beckmeyer has a hand.
Sue Beckmeyer?
Thank you very much. I did have a question on, actually two items. Very, I just wanted to, more a confirming question on item, the last one, we just had the change on, was it 12? No, 13.
13. 13.
The mid-block crosswalk one. I was trying to find this in the scope of work, exactly where those locations are. I don't know if, if the mid-block crosswalk on Odstad that is between a senior housing area and a shopping center was included in this, or if it's included in another project. That was my question on that one. And then I just had a comment on number 12.
I see Director Peterson coming forward. She will assuredly answer your question.
Thank you, Lisa Peterson, Director of Public Works. So all of these are within the schools around the area, so they're, the ones that we have sort of near that area are related to Ortega School, and those are at Alcante and Terranova, the Banyan Crosswalk, Aspen and Terranova. And then there's just a small section right in front of the school that's, that's getting some red and white zone curbing.
Okay, so school-based, at this juncture, this project is about school-based ones strictly?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for clarity.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And then on item 12, I just wanted to remind everyone and thank the council for voting to allocate Measure Y funds to address some of these roads that hurt just so bad they couldn't be addressed in our regular road maintenance, our five-year plans that we do. And so we're going to have roads in Pedro Point, Rockaway, and Valamar that are going to be addressed. Not every road, but some of the worst roads. And that is really huge for us because we've been, you know, near the bottom of pavement condition index and largely because of these extremely bad roads in town. So making some progress in that direction, I think, is really, really positive. And given our usual lack of funding, this is, this is a huge step forward for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine, did you have questions?
I just, no, I just had a couple of minute corrections, if you don't mind. So on packet page 46, so two, two of these I had written down, and then I have to make it a little bit easier for the city clerk. So this is midway down, package page 46, starts Planning Director Murdock. So the sentence is, "They are trying to put in place an interim effective period along the lines of two-year horizon to give them time to prepare the plan, but that's to give us time to prepare the plan." So this, this is all in relation to the LCLUP. So you got that, Emily?
So if, if Councilmember Bowles, if you can just throw out all of your comments now, and then if the council is amenable.
Yeah.
We would need a vote of the council to.
Okay.
To approve the minutes as amended.
Sure.
When they approve the consent item, calendar.
And then on the next page, 47, the second to the last paragraph is quoting me, and it says, "The Coastal Commission is doing their cap," but that's CDP, not CAP, so just a minor typo. And then, I know the, the goal-setting minutes aren't, you know, as full minutes, but there was a couple of places where I thought things weren't so clear. So on packet page 70, let's see if I, can find that now. Okay, so midway on that page, it's, starts Greg Larson. Greg Larson continued the presentation noting that under the goal to be advanced beach boulevard resiliency and esplanade protection projects, and then it ends, and then it starts a council member suggested additional items, so he didn't really finish that sentence. So continuing, noting that blah, 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 advanced the beach boulevard, that there was strong support from council and for finding funds for the pier repair. And then, and then the second part is, should just be a different sentence. Those, those two items weren't related together.
Councilmember Bowles, can you restate that correction?
Sure.
It got lost a little bit in the middle, sorry.
Uh huh. So advanced beach boulevard.
And, and Councilmember Bowles, if you can, we need to, this is a little more complicated than a typo.
Yes.
So are you talking about a concept that was not conveyed in the minutes?
No, the, the sentence isn't complete, and then it's, and it, and it's jumped into a whole different topic.
And which sentence are you?
Yeah, so I, so I'll, I'll read it again. So it starts Greg Larson, page number 70. It's in the middle of the page. Are you, are you there?
Mm-hmm.
Just wait. Okay. Greg Larson continued the presentation noting that under the goal to be advanced beach boulevard resiliency and esplanade protection projects, and then this is where I think something should be added, there was strong support from council and, and wanting to find funds for repairing the pier.
Thank you.
So, and then period, and then, and then a council member suggested is a different sentence.
And so now the council, a majority of the council needs to agree that.
Yes.
That was the representation that was made at the goal-setting to include that into the minutes. Now, if the council cannot remember, cannot recall, you all can, you know, request to not approve these tonight, and maybe you all want to, you know, review whatever minutes, or if, if you recall that discussion and you don't recall that being made, then maybe you do not want to amend the minutes. But if you do, then you could vote to approve the minutes as amended by Councilmember Bowles. But there probably should be some discussion as to whether or not.
The sentence didn't make any sense to me, so you can, you can read it yourself. I did go back and listen.
How'd you say the sentence ends?
Um, sorry, I got off that page.
Protection projects and the pier, is that?
Um, yeah, with strong support from council and also a request to find grants for the pier repairs. So I, I did go back and listen to the recording. I mean, if you read it without it, I mean, it's just weird because it combines a whole nother sentence.
Oh, no, I see it. So advanced beach boulevard resiliency and esplanade protection projects with strong support for council.
By council to seek funds for the pier?
And, yeah, request to seek funds for the pier.
Okay.
You can leave out the pier part, but anyway, at least it's finishing the sentence, with strong support from council, period, and then that's another sentence. Because it goes on to start talking about manner, which is a whole different subject.
I, I could imagine that we said that.
Great.
Because we are, that's true. I mean, so.
Yeah.
Sue Beckmeyer, comment?
I, I agree with you, Mayor. I think that I definitely recall the strong support for beach boulevard resiliency project and esplanade protection projects, and it is the case that we are seeking funds for pier repair, so I think it's okay to include that amendment.
Anything else?
That's all.
Okay. In that case, I will move the consent agenda minus item number 10, with amendments for item number two as stated by Councilmember Bowles, and with amendments for item number 13 as stated by staff.
I'll second.
Please vote. Roll call.
It'll be a roll call vote. So the motion with number two as amended and number 13 as amended, excluding number 10, was made by Councilmember Big Stick and seconded by Councilmember Beer. We will begin the roll call vote. Councilmember Bowles?
Yes.
Councilmember Big Stick?
Yes.
Councilmember Beer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Vaudelos?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And on to item, number 10?
Item number 10. Do you want to start? Do you want me to start?
Yeah, Councilmember Beer, if you, if you have specific questions, we can, we can answer those. I can also provide a, a brief background, and I have Acting Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Director Scott Leslie here to also fill in some details.
That'd be great. So this item is about the backstops at Fairway Park, and I met with one constituent who informed me about the delay in this baseball season, and then I had another phone call from a family who was concerned about when the kids are going to be able to go back to the field. And so I don't think I understood clearly that, like, when the work was going to start and why, why we chose to start it in February, when baseball season starts in February. And so, yeah, there's a lot of questions about why we started it when we did, what's going on now, and when are the kids going to be able to get back on the field?
Sure, let me start with background to the project. So this, this project actually began its process for bids last year, and we knew it would be a fast-track timeline, trying to fast-track it before the baseball season, contracted out, got very favorable bid responses, and began that work during the, during the winter, you know, and I don't know the specific dates when, when the contractor mobilized, but it, what was discovered is some different site conditions that required significant change order, and that's what the subject of this item tonight is, with deeper foundations, or actually very large foundations to support the larger poles for the backstop. So that work needed to be done. The contractor was already mobilized, has done that work, is working as we speak, but we need to approve this change order. And it's a fast-track project. It has impacted the season to some extent. Also, it's been a wet winter, and we're, we're going to be opening one field at a time to try to get them in play as quickly as possible. Obviously, the, the benefit is brand-new backstops for this significant amount of investment into this asset that we're putting into the project. And if, if that doesn't answer things in detail enough, I have Scott Leslie here to provide more.
Yeah, any details you can add in, Scott, because really what I want is I want to be able to point these community members to this recording of the meeting so that they can hear it, because a lot of them aren't going to go looking through minutes for meetings, right? So that's the whole reason why I brought it out, so they could hear it.
All right. Thank you. I'm Scott Leslie, Acting Director for Parks, Beaches, and Recreation. Actually, City Manager hit most of the main points. This was, the, the, the seed of this project was that a year ago, or a little over a year ago, during the storms of 2023, there was significant damage to some of the backstops that needed to be replaced. Everything from chain-link fences that were failing to rotting wood in the back of it, that basically, there's a threshold for which, at some point, you have to stop using it because there's a safety issue, and we were getting very close to that threshold. And instead of letting that happen and having to close in the field and then doing it as almost an emergency situation, the idea was to get it done as soon as possible. There was funds that were returned to the city after the completion of the playground program, playground project at the community center, and the funds were then used to fund this project. Ultimately, where the problem came in is when, during the demolition, after everything was approved, and we're moving forward the contract, it became evident that the, the specific footings of the existing, because part of the original plan was to use the existing structure to build off of, and it just was never going to happen. There were soil condition, there was issues with the soil conditions that made it impossible, so then it required digging down deeper, and every aspect you add to this adds more time. Additionally, there are some supply chain issues that have slowed it a tiny bit, and, and the weather, which has not been terrible, but has delayed it multiple days. So it was ambitious to try to get done by the season, which would have been delayed by one week, which has unfortunately extended that time. At the end, though, I do want to say, it looks beautiful, it's going to be great, it's just the timing was very unfortunate.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the explanation, and I really appreciate the work that you're doing on the field, because we all love Fairway Park so much, so thank you.
Are there any comments from the public? Seeing none in the audience, is there anyone on the phone?
Mayor, we have one hand raised in the audience. No correction, that was a panelist. I'm lowering the hand now.
Thank you.
No hands.
No hands. Okay, I'll bring it back to council, and, oh, Sue?
Mayor, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Beer for bringing this forward. We've had a few little, you know, touches on this. I think also in consent, when we first approved this project, it's, it is impacting a lot of people, and effectively deferred maintenance is what we're dealing with here because, again, of funding. And so being creative and finding the funding to get this project done is going to provide long-term benefit to our community. It's just unfortunate that it's at the expense of part of the season right now, and I realize that's a hardship. I'm just grateful that we're, that we're doing the work and that we're making these improvements for our youth and, and really for a long run of baseball in Pacifica.
Um, if I, I'm not sure I heard from you, if, Scott, if there was a, an approximate timeline that you think the project might be finished?
One of the things that we're working with the contractor to do is not to open all three fields at the same time, but to open one as soon as possible, then go to the next one and so forth. I don't want to give specific dates because it is a construction project and it is still raining out, but the goal is to get things done very soon, the next, I don't want to say next few working days, as in preferably sometime next week is the goal.
Okay, awesome.
At least the very first one.
Thank you.
And I just did want to say, again, thank you so much for the work, and I don't know if the public knows, but there's a lot of work going on on fields at Ortega right now, too, so the lack of fields is really apparent. And so, thank you. I will point the residents to this recording so they can learn all about it this way. So I really appreciate it, and I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving Amendment One to the Agreement Between the City of Pacifica and Armour Fence to Increase the Fairway Park Backstop Replacement Project by $168,669.62, and amend the FY 2023/24 Budget to appropriate the same amount from the Roy Davies Fund 27, subject to required approval by a four, five vote of the council.
Second. And roll call vote. I'm learning.
Councilmember Bowles?
Yes.
Councilmember Big Stick?
Yes.
Councilmember Beer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Vaudelos?
Yes.
Item number 10 passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. So we're moving on to public comment, and persons wishing to address the council on any consent calendar item may do so at this time. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Those wishing to address the council on any item listed on the agenda should submit a speaker card to the city clerk. Public comments are limited, are a limited public forum, meaning that there are rules for commenting at these meetings. Comments on consent items, sorry, we passed consent. Please stay on the topic. The mayor will direct the city clerk to cut you off if you do not. And, sorry, that was the wrong item. It's the eclipse is causing me to. I'm going to blame it on the eclipse all day. Okay. Sorry, let's go to public comment. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Thank you, this is much better. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during this time, provided, however, that only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. Comments on non-agendized items must address matters within the subject matter of the jurisdiction of the city, and if they do not, the city will provide you with an initial warning to stay within the subject. the city will provide you with an initial warning to stay within the subject matter. If the warning is not followed, the mayor will direct the city clerk to cut you off. And council members shall not enter in any debate with the speakers under public comment on items not on the posted agenda. A maximum of three minutes will be allowed. Okay, now. Okay, we have Shereia... Shereia speaking first, followed by Greg Wright, and then Cliff Lawrence.
Hello, everyone. My name is Shereia, and I'm one of the interns at PCT. Hope everyone is doing well. On behalf of Pacifica Television, we would like to invite the city council members and staff, as well as everyone here and watching at home, to come visit PCT's Spring Open House on April 21st. This will be a great event happening in person at 580 Crespe Drive at our studio from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. Our open house will allow you to step into our world and learn about how the station can help you, the community, to create your own media pieces, such as TV shows, podcasts, news, and much more. At the event, we will have fun, interactive activities, like hands-on camera demos, workshops on content creation, and insider tips from our expert team. This is a great chance to learn, connect, and create alongside other media enthusiasts like yourself. Don't miss out on this unique opportunity to see what we have and do as a local community media center. We hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, Greg Wright, Cliff Lawrence, and then John Niblin.
Good evening, Greg Wright. I just wanted to step up and say thank you to you. I know some of the decisions that you're trying to make are very hard decisions in order to try to prioritize things, and many things will go undone. And I know that's not an easy thing to do, but I do trust that you will come to the best decision. I appreciate your time, your deliberation, your giving it your all to make sure you make the best decisions possible. I know it's tough on staff as well. Kevin, in particular, it's hard. Christian, I know it's really hard on you, and everyone else seated there in the back. I appreciate the process. I appreciate the ability to have public input. If it was me, I would advocate for more planning staff, more pickleball courts, things to that effect. But I understand that that's your decision, and I know personally that all decisions aren't always well-received, but I do, once again, trust you guys to do it. Thank you very much for your service, both staff and council. Thank you.
Thank you. Cliff Lawrence, followed by John Niblin, and then Lynn Adams.
Good evening. Happy Eclipse. Cliff Lawrence. First, I'd like to echo the comments about appreciation for the job you have and the job you do, not only for our great council, but also staff. We know it's tough. Right in step with that, we heard a mention of funding earlier, and we always have funding problems, though I think I heard the word surplus once tonight. So two items I have for you. One, this is not a city report. I made this up. It's a spreadsheet that I took all the 1099s and sorted them by dollar value. Do you know what the top item is? Want to guess? It's our contract legal services. This past year, we spent $1.4 million. The year before, $1.9. This actually accounts for about 3% of our whole budget. By my calculation, I could be wrong. I don't know what portion of this can be attributed to the two lawsuits we lost, and whether or not that is impacting our contract legal services. Actually, I would... I don't think the firm actually does litigation, so that was probably on top of that. But I did want to bring that up. The item number two is only 10% of the first item, to give you an idea how huge this is when you sort things out. I love Excel. Also with funding, I got my copy of the brochure. Thank you. Nice glossy glossy. I'm thinking Arlo Guthrie, I think, since I'm talking about the glossies. I have to... I was at the planning meeting when they were talking about Olympia, and I thought I heard somebody from Public Works said that they were $100 million behind in repairs. This is $30 million. So I'm not sure which is correct, or if I misheard that last week. But my question is, what does cost? And is it... What is the purpose of this? Is the purpose of this to form public opinion? If that's what it is, is it actually political? And is that an appropriate expense for the city? If it is? So just wanted to share that with you this evening. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cliff. John Niblin and Lynn Adams.
Thank you. Good evening. I am John Niblin, and I'm a Pacifica resident. Mayor Vodderlaus, I'm really pleased to see you. It's... We live relatively close, but it's rare I get to see you, so... Greetings to the city council, to the city manager, the city attorney. I guess I joined the prior speakers in thanking you for the work you all are doing. You know, I'm sitting here for the last hour and 15 minutes. It's just amazing the range of things that you all have to contend with on our behalf, and I do appreciate all your service to the city. We're dealing with some especially challenging matters, fiscal and, you know, sort of climate-related and et cetera, so it's kind of humbling. You know, on the subject of kind of challenging matters, I was reflecting on that with a friend this last week as I was walking along the pier there, and also thinking about elections, because, you know, I work for the county, and one of the things that's under my sort of portfolio is county elections, and it got me to thinking about the way we're structured here in Pacifica and term limits. Pacifica, as you know better than me, has term limits, and our ordinance code is actually somewhat unusually restrictive in this regard. It provides that no person can serve a... It can stand for election after they've served two terms in office. And, you know, I have been thinking a lot about this and wondering whether or not we're really, as a city, well-served by all this. You know, my perspective is that we have sort of the best tools for dealing with, you know, city council members who we don't want on that as elections. And with district elections in particular, it's relatively easy to pull together a campaign if we want to do something like that. Again, you all deal with very complex matters, and it takes a while, I think, to get up to speed in order to get your arms around these things. I think that I'd note that other jurisdictions in the county that have term limits have generally allowed for three terms rather than two. And I feel that our city is perhaps not as well-served by having city council members who don't achieve the kind of seniority that you see in other cities, where city council members have the opportunity to serve longer periods and are able to build deeper knowledge and sometimes a deeper coalition. So I would ask that you give consideration to perhaps agendizing a discussion about whether or not perhaps our ordinance code ought to be changed. I think this probably would require an election. I really haven't ever drilled into that, but if it would, I would appreciate you all taking a look at it. I think that, again, our... We, as a city, aren't necessarily well-served by the term limits we currently have, so thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, John. Lynn?
Good evening, council. Good evening, staff. Thank you all for being here and for all that you do. I wanted, first and foremost, to invite everyone to Whale Fest. I know that you know about it. I've been talking about it for a while. I'm not sure where to point this at. There we go, down lower. Up higher. There you go. Anyway, everybody is invited to Whale Fest. I think Sheri Bookstaff, she's organizing the youth activities. She exclaimed this best. Come experience how whales live, eat like a whale, keep warm like a whale, find your way like a whale, and sing like a whale. So I added, "Bring the kids. We know they will go home inspired and tired." So I hope that... And I want to thank the city's support. I saw posts, I saw some posts through the city portals, and even a beautiful one on Instagram that shared about that, and I was, like, so proud and so happy, and I've shared it like 25 times. So I wanted... I do want to invite the public to come to Whale Fest. I want them to know that this is an opportunity for us as a community to come together, be outside, breathe in the fresh air. Things are different by the ocean, but they're especially different when you're with each other, and we need to come back together. So I want to invite the public to do that. It's not just a Pacifica event. We're inviting everyone to come together. In fact, Sher and Chin is coming tomorrow to film some of the kids and some of the activities to bring and share on KPIX. So watch the news. Watch 107, The Bone. They're going to be broadcasting it, and Chasta will be our emcee for the day. So it's going to be fun. We have a VIP tour. We have action, if you want to get your hands dirty, at 9:00. And the Whale Fest is from 10:30 until 1:30. If you can find parking for World Surfing Day, you can find parking for the Whale Fest. So thank you very much. Just some of the experiences that you might find with the booths that are there, the Marine Mammal Center, City of Pacifica, Parks, Beaches and Recreation, who are going to be organizing some activities, some fun games for the kids. We have the Public Works and the wastewater treatment. We have the Marine Mammal Center, Fitzgerald Marine Reserve, San Mateo County, and state parks, and a number of others. In addition, we'll have Anna Eshu speaking, and two whale experts talking about a study that they did about whales swimming right here at Sharp Park by our pier. So I please invite all of you to join us. I know you're at the... A lot of you are gone, but I look forward to sharing it with everybody that's here, and if you can't make it, you need to send 25 people in your place.
Correct, Mayor. There are some hands raised in our virtual audience, the first being Samantha Hauser. She's lowered her hand. Our next speaker is Paul Toda.
Hi, thank you. My name is Paul Toda, and I live in Valimar. I'd like to request that the council adds to a future agenda consideration of rescinding term limits for members of our city council. You all have demonstrated tremendous talent over the years, and I'd hate to lose you or future gifted leaders based only upon term limits. Secondly, I hope that one day soon, you will all consider passing a resolution in favor of a ceasefire in Palestine and Israel and the safe return of all hostages. Too many innocent people have already died, including the seven members of World Central Kitchen. Our city is named for a goddess of peace, one created for the 1939 Golden Gate International Exposition. Let's bring her to life by urging the world to stop a war that seems to have no end. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Samantha Hauser. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, can you hear me? Great, okay. I'm Samantha Hauser. I'm speaking as an individual tonight, and I just wanted to pick up on something that John Niblin said about term limits. It strikes me, you know, as he was talking, and I've had this conversation several times in the past, that everything you guys do as council members is so specific and so based on, you know, having this history of knowledge. You know, I'm thinking about participating in CCAG, and I'm thinking about, you know, PC's presentation tonight recognizing Councilmember Big Stick, and I'm thinking about, you know, being on the EDC with Councilmember Beckmeyer and Councilmember O'Neil when he was on council, and how important it was to have that historical knowledge. You know, and I work with a lot of cities professionally, and I agree with what John Niblin was saying, which is that Pacifica is unique in its term limits. Two is, you know, sufficiently long to kind of get acquainted with everybody, and not quite long enough to, you know, continue those relationships that really help us do things like, you know, allocate grants towards Pacifica and get things that we deserve too as a city. So, you know, I just... I appreciate the sentiment, and I wanted to echo it and take this opportunity to say that I think it would be great to have council limits be extended. So for whatever it's worth, I appreciate all of you, and that's my comment.
Our next speaker is Leanna Nguyen.
And I was muted. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hi. My name's Leanna Nguyen. I live in Lynnamar. I actually came on here tonight to make a comment as well about term limits. So I'm so glad to hear that other people before me were talking about them, because I heard that there was some talk about reconfiguring our term limits during your goal setting. And I just wanted to say that I hope that you guys put it on the agenda to keep that conversation open and to kind of educate people around those and understanding of why maybe we should have them a little bit longer than we do. So, yeah, that was all, and thank you, guys, for all that you do.
Our next speaker is Robine Raniels. Please state your name for the record.
Go ahead, Robyn.
Hi, can you hear... Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm happy to join the harmonic convergence discussion about term limits. I'm asking council to revisit the subject of city council term limits. I'm not opposed to new blood on city council. It's just been my observation over the many years I've lived here that important, long-term council projects can become so distracted, or worse, halted, when new council members come in. It's kind of like a recreating the wheel type of a problem. A disruption of a previously approved project's goals by a previous council and timeline to the point public support can dwindle, money can disappear, or both. It appears to have gotten worse since going to district elections. In smaller districts such as mine, with a smaller candidate pool, what if no one wants to run? What happens to the seat of that council member? There's no plan for that currently. Right now, it's at two terms and done for life. I think three terms instead of two is reasonable. I also think that after a four-year break, the ability to run again once a different perspective has been tried for a term is better than the dismissive one-for-life, or done-for-life, excuse me. It takes knowledgeable and experienced council members like you to conduct the important business of Pacifica. Extending term limits would be a way to add to this valuable experience, to add this valuable experience back into the city council candidate pool. Thank you. And one other comment, I wanted to thank you also for the city's constant outreach to try to keep the people of Pacifica involved in the current decisions that you're making, whether it's putting people on email lists, sending out those blasts, things coming from planning, very important projects, and even the little mailer cards that you send out. It's very important to try to reach everybody in town so we all have a voice in this, and I think you're doing an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Blue Morofe. Please state your name for the record.
Blue, you can go ahead.
Blue, you're unmuted. Feel free to speak if you're able to. Can go ahead to the next speaker and come back to Blue in a moment.
Yes.
Next speaker is Summer Lee. You're unmuted. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Summer Lee. I've...
I do want to thank you council members, that you give so much time and energy to serving our community, and that you come to this community with a spirit of service. I wanted to say that I couldn't be more against this idea of repealing term limits. First of all, it is something that would have to go to the vote of the people, and it would be very expensive to put this proposition, to counter this when it was already voted to have these two term limit policy. I also want to acknowledge that this city council has never had a person of color. I could be very wrong, but I'm almost sure that there's never been a person of color serving as a council member. And I think the money that would be used for this proposition to overturn these term limits would be best used for creating more diverse representation and to empower the underserved and those who have not historically had a voice in the decision-making of Pacifica to get those people in council. The historical information and experience and relationships you build in your two terms are not, do not go to waste. I know many community members who have served two terms and then go on to continue their community work, working in great endeavors for the city. But really, it's time for new voices not to block the process of that. So thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next hand raise is from Delia. Delia, you are now able to unmute, and please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Delia McGrath. Welcome, or good evening, everyone. And I'm 46 years a homeowner resident in Pacifica. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the people of Gaza, our veritable sisters and brothers, and on behalf of all of us who love them and wish safety and sustenance for them. Over 14,000 of the 33,000-plus Gazans who've been killed since October 7th were children. This fact alone keeps me awake at night. Over 30 members of my extended family in Gaza have been killed to date. A million and a half people are crowded into southern Gaza's Rafa City, which is slated to be invaded imminently by Israeli military, where numerous more deaths of civilians, many of them children, will be killed. It is truly unconscionable to remain silent in light of this horror. There are three ways that the people of Gaza are being killed. First, by ongoing military strikes using weapons and bombs paid for by our taxes since the US is funding this heinous invasion. Number two, starvation, famine-like conditions. And number three, diseases, with limited medical care available and the lack of clean water and even the most basic sanitation. As of March 2024, over 100 cities, including 15 California cities, had passed ceasefire resolutions. A council resolution is more than a symbolic gesture. It provides leadership at the local level and assures our citizens that our city stands on the right side of history. A city council resolution will amplify the voices of our Pacifica people who are already committed to taking a stand for humanity. Thank you for hearing my request that you pass a resolution for a ceasefire in Gaza. Peace to everyone, thank you.
Thank you, Delia.
Our next hand raise is from Peter Loeb. You now have the ability to unmute yourself and state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Peter Loeb. I assume you can hear me?
Yes.
I'm watching this meeting at home and was quite surprised to see, I think it's five speakers who have spoken in favor of extending term limits. That looks very engineered, something's going on here. But I wanted to say that term limits was adopted, the two-term limit was adopted by a vote of the people. If you're going to change that, I believe you have to go to a ballot measure again to change that, which would mean that the council could place that on the ballot, but it would take a majority of the council to do that, and there's a cost associated with putting any measure on the ballot. I think that if a measure was on the ballot to extend term limits, I believe it would lose. People voted once before for a two-term limit, and I think they would, their position would stay the same. I think that this is a waste of time to even discuss this, because you're going to be in a world of hurt if this becomes an item that the council discusses and decides to put on the ballot. It's going to be, it's going to be a really ugly, nasty election campaign. I can just guarantee it. I think it's a terrible idea. You should not waste any time discussing it, because it's going to result, A, in not extending term limits, and B, costing the city a lot of money, wasted money. I'm totally opposed to this idea. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next hand raise is from Marsha Murphy, and this is the last hand raise at this time. You now have the ability to unmute yourself and state your name for the record.
Hi, everybody. My name is Marsha Murphy, a longtime resident of Lindemar. And I am, I'd like to support the notion of the council doing a resolution for the ceasefire in Gaza. It's the least we could do. Thanks.
Thank you. And Blue's not there?
Correct, there are no other hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other hands, we'll bring it back to council for council communications. I have no lights. Go ahead.
I didn't flip the light yet. Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, council. As always, Ukraine and Israel weigh persistently heavily on my mind, and it's not lost on me, the community asking for a ceasefire, and I continue to wrestle myself, and that's where I'm at right now. In terms of the comment that it seemed engineered, that five people would surreptitiously show up to start asking for term limits, I did ask people to show up to ask for term limits. That is an astute observation. And we discussed it a bit at goal setting, and it was recommended to me that I see if I could find five diverse community members, which I think more or less is who showed up to make comment about it, and specifically because I think it does bear a discussion. It is true, it would have to go to a vote of the people. I think a part of the discussion is finding out how much it would cost to put on the ballot during an election year when already we're putting things on the ballot. My understanding is it's far less expensive than other times of the year, but that would be a part of the discussion. And specifically, the reason why I think that this should be discussed is because the difference between now and when term limits were put on the ballot last time is we have districts at this point. In 2016, four people ran citywide. By the time that campaign was over, three of those people were able to continue to run. One of them disqualified themselves, different story. But of those three people who ran, I couldn't tell you what the distribution was amongst the city for two seats, but it very well may have been that for either of those two seats, it was one candidate, or for that matter, it could have been that with the current distribution of districts, none of those three candidates would have had a seat open to them. So aside from having a seat that ran unopposed last time, which I don't fundamentally disagree with, I've noticed that across San Mateo County, there were 10 other jurisdictions where folks ran unopposed, in three or four of them, two people ran unopposed. So I think that it is the right time to have the discussion to see whether or not there's any will to put it on the ballot, and if so, what would be put on the ballot. I have my own sense of what might make more sense, but I think that that's what a discussion is for. And so I will ask for it to be agendized by city manager, that we can have that discussion and decide whether or not we do want to spend the money and whether or not it makes sense. In terms of what I've been doing between then and now, I went to the county supervisors' meeting on the 26th. They sent a letter regarding AT&amp;T possibly taking away that lifeline of landlines from people. There was also discussion around the Cypress Point Affordable Housing Development in Moss Beach. I attended a meeting of the Department of National Subdiplomacy regarding plastics and the way that cities and jurisdictions are coming together to create what hopefully will wind up being national policy around plastics. I talked to Kevin Wilk in Walnut Creek, trying to put together a session for Cal Cities in October. And so hopefully, working with Kevin Wilk and city manager from Ventura, more to come on that if Cal Cities picks up on the session. I've had a couple of Legislative Action Committee meetings with Peninsula Division of Cal Cities for the forthcoming City Leaders Summit, in which a bunch of us, both from Santa Clara County and San Mateo County, will be heading up to Sacramento to talk to our various state And then later that day, I attended a seminar entitled Changing Perspectives, which is Understanding Inclusion, Ableism, and Neurodiversity, which was put on by The Parent Venture. Attended the special council meeting on the 28th. Sean Marshall, Executive Director of Peninsula Clean Energy, told you most of the meeting I attended the other week. The next meeting's going to be on 4/25, the 25th of this month. What she didn't mention was that Donna Colson, our friend and mayor of Burlingame, has been promoted to the Chair of Peninsula Clean Energy, and Marty Medina of San Bruno, the Vice Chair. Met with a council member, friend of mine in Santa Clara, for lunch, and watched the Planning Commission meeting on the 1st, and then had another one of those Legislative Action Committee meetings with Cal Cities Peninsula Division this morning. Looking forward to sitting in on the City and County Associations of Government meeting in your place on Thursday. I'm learning fun new acronyms like ALUCP. Let's see if I got that right, Airport Land Use Something Plan. Consistency Plan, I believe. So I'm looking forward to that meeting, and that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I too long for a ceasefire in Gaza. So I'm just going to state that right up front. And I also would like to just take responsibility for a mistake I think I made at our last council meeting when I didn't request conversation when we were appointing our planning commissioners. And as I thought about it more, I think it would have been only fair for me to do that. There were really great applicants in this pool, and it would have been worth a conversation. So I just wanted to apologize for all of those who applied, and to please let you know to reapply when seats open up. And I see our new commissioner out in the audience today. But yeah, I made that mistake, and I really wanted to take responsibility for that, and I just, I need to do better. I attended our Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for, what is it, CCG, City and County Association of Governments. And we went over the local roadway safety plan, and I sent it to our city manager to have you send it out to my colleagues, because there is a public comment period. And so please, if you're interested to take a look at that on the CCG website, it is a local roadway safety plan. Our HART meeting was canceled this month, and I attended the Coast Pride Board meeting. We've been doing some really deep anti-racist work at Coast Pride, and it's been, it's really hard work, and it's really important work, and I keep learning more and more and more about myself and how I carry myself in the world. And so I really appreciate the amount of time and energy that's going into these trainings. I also want to thank Lauren Smith, who is the co-chair for Pacifica Pride, and actually, Lauren is the chair, because I have not been pulling my weight at all. So Lauren, you are the chair, and thank you for all the work you're doing. There will be a fundraiser on the 21st at Table Wine from 4:00 to 7:00. So this can be your weekend. You could go to Whale Fest on Saturday, and then you can go to PCT Open House, and then you can go to Table Wine for the Pride fundraiser. So everybody now has full weekend plans for April 20th and 21st. And what else is there? There is the Age Friendly Coalition. So I attended the Age Friendly Coalition meeting, because we were in, we were planning for our Pacifica's inaugural Age Friendly Community Town Hall meeting, which is happening tomorrow, Tuesday, April 9th, from 3:00 PM to 4:45 at the Pacifica Community Center. You don't, what we really want to do is we want Pacifica residents ages 50 and older to share their opinion and priorities for enhancing the lifelong livability of Pacifica. Now, you don't have to be 50 and over to share your perspectives, so all are welcome. But we are really looking forward to having a good turnout tomorrow, and we'll be facilitating tabletop conversations and focus groups and gathering information. So I want to thank Roy Ernst so much for his leadership. And then I also want to request that the Age Friendly Coalition have a special presentation of their action plan at some point soon, just so to update council on what the action plan is and what it's going to look like. So I think that would be a really great opportunity for them to come here and talk to us about that. And I, nope, May is Mental Health Month, and so there's, over the years, with the Mayor's Mental Health Initiative, we were able to collaborate with San Mateo County on many, many different activities and things during May is Mental Health Month. So we just got the email again from Sylvia from the county, and so we have an opportunity to participate this year, and it's San Mateo County Against Loneliness, Healing Through Connection. We have the opportunity to pass a proclamation, light up the city, like there's all kinds of things we can do, so I'm hoping that we will jump on board. So thank you to the mayor for shaking your head right now, I appreciate it. Yeah, okay, that's it, thanks.
Christine. I want to start by thanking the peace people too, and I too long for a ceasefire in Gaza, and the end to ceaseless, to senseless killing all over the world. Thank you for your advocacy. I agree with Mary too, and I also want to apologize for the Planning Commission vote. It happened so quickly that the motion and second was made, and then a vote was called. But we, procedurally, we do have a right to ask for deliberation, and I'll be paying more attention to that in the future. And I just want to perhaps ask the city attorney, before I go on, just a procedural question about responding to public comments from the dais after, you know, open public comments. I know we're told that we're not supposed to really engage with people or, you know, respond more than a little bit, because it's not something on the agenda. So could you just clarify what the procedures are for us as well as for the public to understand?
Well, if it's a comment to staff about doing some more, get to providing more information to the council, those kinds of comments are fine. But because it's not on the agenda, the council cannot deliberate on it. So you can direct comments to the city manager, but you would not be able to direct comments necessarily to your council to invoke deliberation. That's really what we're trying to avoid. Unfortunately, it depends on what you would like to say. And then what I do is I will tell you that's, you know,
And then what I do is I will tell you that's, you know, eliciting deliberation, or if it's just providing direction to staff or asking questions of staff.
Okay, so you would interrupt us if we started to go off track? Okay.
And I would just say, if you're talking to the city manager, that's probably fine, asking questions of the city manager. If you start directing comments to your colleagues, that's probably where I will jump in.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see, I've had a lot of meetings this month too, a lot with constituents about, there's so much going on in town. The quarry, the local coastal plan, and also residents in Sharp Park about paving and trees. And I appreciate Public Works joining me for a meeting with some constituents there today. The Climate Committee met, and last time we didn't have a date for the event that they're planning. So this is a follow-up to the electrification event with more sort of nuts and bolts of how you can do this work in your house. The, you know, it's going to be called Healthy Air, Healthy Homes event. It's going to be at the Sharp Park Library on Saturday, May 18, from 2:00 to 4:00. I want to thank Planning Director Murdock. He and I met with Solutions for Supportive Homes, who, as I've mentioned in the past, are very interested in building affordable housing for adults with disabilities in town. They've got money and they're ready to go. And we actually spent time actually looking at specific sites and some that are on the decertification and surplus land. And we don't yet have all the information as a city as to what those processes are going to entail. For example, on the Caltrans park and ride. But they have offered to do that legwork for us. And so that, you know, as they're looking at multiple sites, then we'll have information, hopefully, for other affordable developers who are coming and interested in building these projects too. So thank you, Christian. I went to, this is a new group that I'd never heard of before, and I got an email invitation that sounded really interesting called Partnership for the Bay's Future. So they're based in San Francisco with funding from the Chan Zuckerberg Foundation. So the event they held was called Building Sustainable Communities: A Council Member's Guide to Affordable Housing. And so one of the things we learned about is that they actually, through their partnerships with the, some of the foundations, actually provide funding for housing staff in cities, planning departments to help with affordable housing and capacity building. So I'm trying to get some more information from them about that to see if it's something we might be able to take advantage of here. They've got a couple of other, I've got a whole brochure, and I can pass it around to you all. The next one is on April 26th. So some of these, this one was in person, but some of these are now going to be on Zoom, so it's easier to do in the middle of the day. The next one on the 26th is called Catalyzing Change from Vision to Action. So learn the latest strategies with the housing sector covering crucial topics like housing element implementation, density bonus programs, state laws, and the role of regional finance authorities. Anyway, goes into Mott to finance and funding and all kinds of other specifics to try to get these projects built in our town. Mayor Vaterlas and I attended the Building Trade Unions event at the Fairline Room at Skyline, which was really a fun social event. And a lot of the individual unions in the construction trades were there. So that was fun for me, talking to electricians and elevator people and so forth, kind of learning what their, what their issues are, what the market is like, and how the unions support, you know, our cities. Had an airport roundtable meeting this week, and this was really interesting. I didn't realize that Caltrans Land Use Division actually manages the airport and the runways and the land use around the airports. And so, and they also look at economic development as well as, you know, safety of runways and, you know, appropriate project development near the airports. But this particular presentation was on advanced air mobility, which is, you know, the main topic coming up with these helicopter-like vehicles that are all electric, but that are going to be taking over really our skies. The FAA is approving, reviewing and approving two big corporations that are going to be putting these vehicles in our airspace probably in the next year. And so there's a lot of planning that needs to go around that. Some corridors, but also where we want to have, you know, landing facilities. And so they also offered to meet with cities as part of land use, if that's something that we might want to do for bringing into our city potentially as part of a bigger, larger-scale development project. And then I think several of us met. Aaron Peskin's office invited coastal council members from all over the state to his office to let us know about some upcoming legislation that's being considered at the state level. And the details weren't really fully flushed out at that meeting, but some of these are being discussed at the Coastal Commission meeting this Wednesday. There's a legislative report in the morning. And I just wanted to highlight a couple that I'm a little bit concerned about. So AB 2560, which the Coastal Commission opposes, basically intends to override the Coastal Act and city's LCP policies for density bonus projects. So basically, no limits to density if you're within a half mile of the traffic stop, and you're not necessarily looking at coastal hazards views and all the other things that the Coastal Commission reviews. So they're suggesting a no vote on that. Anyway, SB 951 and SB 1077 too. So I think what's happening is the state housing laws that, you know, are pushing a lot on us, that we've had to do with our housing element, are now also pushing the Coastal Commission and trying to, trying to take away some of their review control for these projects. But what's particularly troubling is it's not, it's not specifically affordable housing. It's really any kind of housing. And affordability is actually being weakened in some of these laws too. Anyway, it's important to pay attention and advocate, make sure we know what's going on before the laws come into effect. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Sue?
I did not have a lot of meetings. I attended some of the meetings that council members are mentioning. Thank you for bringing up the, it's called Our Neighborhood Voices. It's the coalition of various electeds that met from across the state in coastal communities and not coastal communities on that Zoom meeting last week. I think there's going to be much more information coming in to the public realm on this. That meeting was for electeds. And I think it, as Councilmember Bowles said, I think it's very much, the main concern, as I could discern, is where housing law, and specifically with regard to density, is going to be overriding Coastal Commission authority in the coastal zone, or appears to be that it would do that. And so more will be out in the public about this. If you see something about Our Neighborhood Voices, that's what it's about. And Aaron Peskin is a big mover behind it. I wanted to ask staff to make a note from the Beautification Advisory Committee meeting last week. Apparently, the Priority Parks Report is being finalized by PBNR staff and other staff, I guess. And it probably will be going before PBNR Commission. But the Beautification Committee was also asking for information about that when it's, when it's ready, to just make a note to, to make sure that Director Peterson has the opportunity to bring that to BAC. I am on vacation this week and will not be attending both of my liaison meetings. So I was hoping that, I think you cannot do the Economic Development one tomorrow, Councilmember Beer, because it sounds like it conflicts with the Open House, or what is it? The Town Hall meeting about aging. And then also the Library Advisory Committee meeting on Wednesday. I would zoom in if I could, but I can't. So Councilmember Bowles, if you're available on Wednesday and can attend that meeting in my place, that would be great. And I think that's really it for me.
Thank you. I attended a couple of FOG Fest board meetings because now that FOG Fest is back, we have a lot going on. We have groups now that are coming into FOG Fest to do sponsorships. So hopefully, it's really taking off, and there's a lot of energy behind FOG Fest. And so many of us are so happy it's going forward. So thank you to all the new people who stepped up and people who are trying to get sponsorships. And there's certain people working on bands and certain people working on logistics and others. It's great. I met also with Kevin Mullen. We talked about funding, even though he's not in our district. I feel like I've said this, but anyway, he will help us with certain funding that we need because he does care about Pacifica and wishes the districts were in different places. I also saw Diane Pap in there, so we spoke briefly. And we all went, had a special council meeting. I attended the Building Trades, and that was kind of fun because even someone came up to me and said hi, and I had no idea who they were because I knew them when they were in school 30 years ago. And I attended the elected officials' meeting with Aaron Peskin. And now I'm going to do something I don't normally do, but I'm going to talk about the people living in motor homes. I got a complaint from a member of the public about parties living in a motor home near them in an allowed space. And they went on and on about items that were actually not true because I happen to know the person living in that specific motor home. And the things that have happened are horrendous. Getting yelled at, people honking horns at all hours, the people stopping and criticizing the person directly, saying that they don't pay taxes. They do pay taxes. They have a job. But there is sometimes not enough money to pay the high cost of rents here. The worst part of all of this, and you can see I'm very emotional about it, someone actually smeared feces all over the motor home. And I just want to say to people, you know, have some compassion. Think about other people. Think about that so many of us could be one paycheck away from, from living in a motor home or in the bushes somewhere. So please, you know, think about others and, and think about what you're doing. And I'll end there. Thank you. So staff communications?
Thank you, Mayor Vaterlas, council members, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. I just have one communication that I want to provide, and that is to, mainly for members of the public viewing audience, a reminder that next Monday evening is a city council special meeting here in the council chambers to continue work on the local coastal land use plan update. That meeting is beginning early at 5:30 PM with anticipation of a lot of work to get through that evening. So I just wanted to mention that, that that's happening here in the, in the council chambers next Monday evening. Complete my communications.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break. So it's 9:05, 9:10, and we'll come back for the consideration item. Thank you. Thank you. It is 9:15 and we're going to reconvene the council meeting with the consideration fiscal year 2024-25 budget planning process timeline and preliminary budget strategy.
We can't hear you.
That's because I don't have my mic. I thought you could hear me anytime, anywhere. Consideration fiscal year 2024-25 budget planning process timeline and preliminary budget strategies. And may we have the staff report?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Today we are starting our fiscal year 2425 budget planning discussion and I'm Julia Cardo, I'm Assistant City Manager. So today we will be discussing budget timeline methodology. We will also ask for your input on preliminary budget strategies and touch base on the next steps.
Okay, thank you.
It's everything okay?
Yes.
So first, we want to touch base on where we are in the budget process. And this slide shows the timeline for the budget development process. So today we are in public meeting number three, as you can see on this calendar. The budget process starts, budget cycle, new budget cycle starts with the mid-year budget review that was presented to council at the last meeting. The council also held its first strategic planning session on March 9th. And the adoption of the strategic plan and priorities will be coming back to council on April 22nd, so the next meeting. And today we are holding the first budget study session and discussing methodology calendar. And again, we need your input on preliminary budget strategies. Later in May and June, well, the following budget study session, number two, will be in May. That's when we are going to bring the whole base budget to you and including CIP budget review. The calendar also counts for the planning commission review of the CIP plan for conformity with the general plan. So we're planning this meeting on June 3rd at the planning commission meeting. And then on June 10th, you will be discussing the budget recommendations and city managers' recommendations for the proposed fiscal year 2425 budget. And finally, this process ends with the public hearing and adoption of the budget in June, on June 22nd, so second meeting in June. So let's spend just a couple of minutes on methodology that we are using for this budget process. We presented the current year's mid-year budget review at the last council meeting. So during this mid-year review, we projected revenues, expenditures, and fund balances for the rest of the year. And we plan to use this work as it will become a foundation for the new budget cycle. Once we receive your feedback tonight on preliminary budget strategies, we will finalize our internal budget instructions to departments that are scheduled to go out this week. So this year we continue using the modified zero-based budget methodology that we introduced a couple of years ago. This is a systematic financial management tool and strategy that is quite commonly used in local governments to help achieve more cost-effective delivery of public services. And developing the base budget is the key step in this development process to determine surplus or deficit for the upcoming year. So again, this will be presented to you on May 13th. And at that point, any reductions or enhancements in services above or below base budget will be presented to council for consideration at the future study session. So now we are moving to the preliminary budget strategies discussion. And the next slide, well, as you remember, the comprehensive, the, on March 9th, the council held the strategic planning session workshop. And the adoption of the strategic plan and priorities will be coming to you on the 22nd of April. But this key budget goals for the upcoming six years have not changed. So city council confirmed the following five strategic goals during the strategic planning workshop. And related to these goals, we put together preliminary budget strategies that we would like to hear your feedback today so we can start developing the base budget. And some of them will, may be incorporated in the base budget. So strategy number one is utilizing funding strategies to augment the professional staffing while minimizing general fund impact. So this strategy supports goal number one. There are two, well, major drivers to this strategy. And we already discussed it in different presentations throughout the year. So the first driver is, well, challenging labor market recruitment and retention challenges. Again, we communicated to council high turnover rates, ongoing vacancy rates that we've been experiencing for the last couple of years. That also led to multiple recruitments for keep positions. And as a result of it, well, people leaving for other opportunities or retiring. So we experienced some loss of institutional knowledge and of course, loss of time and cost of recruitment, training, and onboarding of new staff. And unfortunately, many job classifications remain below market in total compensation. The council made quite significant steps and lost labor agreements. But again, we are taking steps towards the right direction, but the problem, as you know, is not fully resolved yet. And the second driver for the strategy is staffing level itself and organizational capacity. And we also referenced this in previous meetings as well. So when we referenced the study completed a few years ago that showed that Pacifica is 23% lower staffed compared to other cities in the area, similar in our size and service level. And we are currently working on a staffing level analysis. We plan to present some preliminary results of this work during the next, well, the future budget study sessions. So as you well know, adding positions in a city like Pacifica may present some challenges because we don't have a large revenue base. So this kind of decisions need to be considered very carefully for long-term sustainability. But there are some strategies that are less risky and, well, more, well, kind of preliminary strategies that are listed here on the slide that you may want to consider and direct, provide your input to us and we will build our budget around them. So the first one is funding for interns and fellows to augment staff work and invest in professional development of potential future employees. So the city partnered with Civic Park last year to host a very qualified bright intern to work on the climate action and adaptation plan. And we would like to create the ongoing in-house intern position in planning department to continue this work that was started last year and capitalize on the success that we achieved so far. So that's one of the strategy. And again, we already have classification of interns, so we want to just bring this individual onboard. And the second kind of sub-strategy here is continue with the countywide internship program. And again, council may remember that last summer we hosted a very successful class of interns in each department. And we definitely want to continue participating in this program and do it again this year. Another strategy is to continue budgeting for additional contract planning services. Most of this work would be reimbursable by private applicants. So that's again, something we started, initiated last year and we want to continue doing for the upcoming year. And finally, another budget strategy is to start factoring in a reasonable and sustainable salary savings rate in the budget to gain more capacity and funding labor increases and additional staffing as well. So this may become our ongoing strategy for the next few years to increase our organizational capacity. But I want to point out that the strategy needs to be monitored very closely throughout the year. It's quite risky. So we would be looking at it throughout the year and it may have to be reviewed at mid-year depending on where we are. So the next strategy is addressing financial uncertainties concerning the vehicle license fee in lieu payments from the state. Again, this strategy supports goal number one. We provided background in the current state of the VLF and LOU funding issue at mid-year budget review. You may recall that outcome of this discussion was to, for council to approve recommendation for one-time reduction of the general fund emergency reserve to fund this year's, well, state's takeaway of nearly 1.7 million that was due to the city in the current fiscal year. So based on the state's continuing position that the ongoing receipt of these revenues remain in jeopardy unfortunately. And as we communicated before, the San Mateo County city managers and financial officers are working together on unified response to this issue. And based on these discussions, the city manager recommends budgeting the VLF and LOU revenues that are due to the city in the upcoming year. And in our case, that includes, well, almost 1.5 millions, 1.4 and a change million in revenues that currently in jeopardy. And that's the fiscal year 2223 shortfall because there is a two-year lag in our receipt of these revenues. So budgeting for these revenues would be the strategy, but if the state does not follow through on the obligations, then additional reduction in the emergency reserve might be needed again in the mid-year review until this issue is resolved. And again, as we mentioned before, this is evolving issue. So we will continue monitoring and issuing update to council once we have any more information on this. The next strategy is maintaining a status quo for annual profit organizations. Again, this supports goal number one. Following the council's discussion on NGO funding a few meetings ago, we want council to confirm that these are the NGOs that should continue receiving the same funding level for the upcoming 2425. You can see again, three-year history and green is what we are looking for confirmation from you so we can build it in, in the base budget. Strategy four is the capital improvement program funding for unfunded infrastructure projects. Again, this supports actually two goals, goal number one and goal number two. The complete fiscal year 2429 CIP program will be presented on May 13th meeting. But again, given the city's current financial position. But again, given the city's current financial position and substantial resources needed to fund the capital improvement program, funding for non-discretionary capital projects is another ongoing budget challenge that requires strategy to address. Given that the city does not have dedicated capital revenue sources, using general fund contribution towards the CIP may not be sustainable in the future. Or the level of use in, of general fund would have to be discussed as a policy determination. And this is why for the fiscal year 2425 budget, the city manager recommends starting the RFP process for development impact fee, cost allocation and master fee study. So what we are proposing is to launch the development impact fee nexus study as the first step in this multi-faced project. I also want to point out that the study has not been done in the city for quite a few years. And the municipal best practices guidelines suggest that the study should be done every five, seven years ideally for those cities have resources to do that, to do so. I also want to mention that this is a very major project that would require a lot of staff resources and work from, well, especially from public works, planning and finance departments. So that's why we need to be realistic and careful how we time and schedule it so we can actually deliver. So the next strategy is continuing allocating a portion of the access educational revenue augmentation funding, also known as access ERAF, toward funding for affordable housing. This strategy supports goal number three. And again, the, all the driving factors here that just remind council that access ERAF is not considered to be stable revenue source. So it's considered to be one time, year after year. So that's why we don't budget for this in the general fund with the exception of those portion of the ERAF that goes towards NGO funding. So in fiscal year 2324, city council approved the recommendation to start splitting the access ERAF balance following allocation of the, to NGOs like PRC and PBC. And the split was between the disaster accounting fund and housing and LOU fund to fund future affordable housing projects. So if supported by council, we want to continue with the same strategy for 2425 and allocate the access ERAF revenues as listed here. So again, depending on your direction on the previous strategy, that 100,000 would go toward Pacifica Resource Center, 5,000 toward Pacifica Beach Coalition. And then the remaining balance would be split 5050 between disaster accounting and housing and LOU fund. So these are all the strategies that we have for you today to weigh in. But I want to touch base on the next steps in the process. Again, we are not asking for any specific council recommendation today or action today. But we will definitely take your input on the information presented and specifically on the strategies. And for the next immediate steps, so the council adoption of the strategic plan and priorities will be coming back to you on, at the next meeting. And the next budget study session is scheduled for May 13th. And that's when we, we will discuss the base budget, position control, financial outlook and the CIP plan for the upcoming year. And the following two meetings will be, well, proposed budget and public hearing on the, on budget adoption. And that concludes my presentation. So I have this timeline slide again, just in case you have any questions. And I'm happy to go back to any strategies if you want to discuss.
Mary Beer.
Yeah, I just have a question about the development impact fee, cost allocation and master fee study. When was the last time we did that?
Well, for the development impact fee, I'm not even sure. I think it's been like decades. For the master fee schedule, I think the last study was done in 2011 or 2012, something like that, because I remember we've looked at that.
Okay.
But still, it's way, way past you on both.
Got it, thanks.
Christine.
Thank you. Can you, thank you for the presentation, Yulian, and for this outline of all the different meetings. Can you just confirm, so, so if we're looking at additional strategies to bring in more revenue, and I know we're potentially talking about some bond measures, is that, would that be in item five? Where does that fit into your schedule, talking about other potential revenue sources?
Yeah, Councilmember Rolls, I can, I can address that. So the, the council's consideration of potential revenue measures for the November ballot wouldn't be something that's built into the budget because that's not a decision that, I mean, the, the, the decision for council to place any measure on the ballot is in August sometime. We'd probably, council, like two years ago, made that decision early July. So it's not really part of the budgeting process. It is part of the council's strategic plan and a major priority to be doing that research and building up the information for council to make a decision about that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Sue, I can't see you. Do you have any questions? Yes?
I wonder why you can't see me. Oh, you don't have my square?
Here you come, I think.
Okay, no worries. A couple of items.
There you are.
Hi. Following on to Councilmember Beer's question and in regard to the information you presented in the staff report, how long does it take to do a proper development impact fee, cost allocation and master fee study?
Well, given that we haven't done it for a while, it will probably take longer than if we did it every five years. So the process will typically start with the comprehensive RFP and selecting the consultant. So the, that, that process usually takes at least three months, I would say. Then with the kickoff of the, well, what we are proposing to start with the development impact fee nexus study as a first phase. So that process, again, depending on the staff input and our capacity to do it and how quickly we will develop, I would say it could take anything up to six months easily. And for the cost allocation plan, this one is a little tricky because usually it ties to the budget. So depending on the timing, when we start this process, we want to, we want this to be tied to the latest budget you have. Because every time you make changes, you change the cost of your services, right? And you, when you look at the master fee schedule, which is the last step in this process, you want to, you want your cost allocation plan to be up to date, to do this. So for cost allocation plan, again, if we did it on the clock every five years, I would say you could probably do it in three months. In our case, I would say it's three to six months. And the master fee schedule, another good four months to finish that process because that will require a lot of input from each department.
And so those are, it sounds to me like are consecutive processes, not concurrent processes.
Well, the development impact fee would be sort of standalone project. So that's why I recommend going first with that. And the other two steps, that's correct. You cannot start on master fee schedule until you finish the cost allocation plan.
So it sounds like altogether, considering the standalone development impact and then the subsequent cost allocation and master fee study, we wouldn't probably be looking at being ready to have that information inform the 2526 budget cycle.
Correct, yes, and that, that's exactly what.
Like 2027 maybe, is that correct?
Well, for development impact fee, we definitely want to have this information available for the following year's budget. So as far as building revenue base, you will be able to build it in, into the following budget. The cost allocation fee may or may not be ready until the following year after that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And then with regard to the strategy that involved general fund in transfer, I guess, into the capital improvement program, while that's not generally recommended and we have more capital needs than we have general fund, clearly. I just wanted to double check that we currently did allocate funds in that way for our civic center project. But we are not anticipating doing that at this point in time in this budget cycle for the coming year.
That's, well, the civic center hopefully will be done before the next fiscal year.
Right, that's what I mean.
Right, but as far as the general fund contribution towards the CIP program, that information will be coming to you at the May meeting. So we don't know yet what, what the upcoming CIP and priority projects will look like and how to balance it. Because it has to be balancing project, process involved. So we, we will definitely try to use other revenue sources first. But if any priority projects or emergency projects will need to be funded, so general fund will be last resort.
All right, and then finally, I would just like to say that I will have some comments and some interest in having a discussion on strategy number three on the other side of public comment.
I have a question on strategy number three. And additional, additional nonprofits that could definitely benefit from some funds towards their projects. And I was wondering, how do we go about including additional, additional nonprofits?
Well, one of the points in actually having this be a strategy is that I listened to what the council directed regarding our discussion about nonprofit funding. And so, and bringing back the recommendation that to, to follow kind of what the council, the input the council had made and, and, and remaining status quo. Because then it begs, if the council does want to add additional nonprofits, it begs the question about what's the process to do that? And that we don't have a process. So in, in any given budget, the council can discuss, deliberate and decide whether there are additional, you know, grants the city wants to give to other nonprofits. But that's the point of this discussion tonight is just to tee that up to verify that, okay, we're good with this. Or ideally, council wants to consider others. And then when we get into the details and the budget and all of the balancing of the priorities, that's a conversation that comes back to the council.
So we bring it up right now or when we?
My, my, my preference, if, if, if the council is thinking about funding additional nonprofits, my preference is that I, I do hear initial discussion about that tonight. Because then we need to take that back. And when we come back with the, with the base budget and we're analyzing all the potential revenue and the priorities and where it's going to be used, we can, you know, we, we know that there might be this request.
Okay, and that wouldn't be a question, it would be a deliberation. So.
Correct.
Okay, so does anyone have any more questions? Yes?
Just continuing on, on, on that strategy for nonprofits, can you explain the, the heart number, why it's such a funny number, $12,249?
Well, I believe it's a funny number because that's what was paid the year before. So we just maintain the status quo.
Yeah, that's a good question, Councilmember Rolls. I don't, I, I don't remember off the top of my head and I don't have their annual letter with me. But, but there is a, a formula.
There's a formula.
That drives it.
Oh, there's a formula, okay.
I don't have it in front of me, but I can get it for you.
Okay, okay, I'm just curious. And then can you tell me when, so I know last year we raised the amount for the Pacifica Resource Center. I think it was 20, an extra $20,000. Can you tell me when we last raised the amount for the Pacifica Beach Coalition?
That predates me. I, I, I'm not sure of the history of the Beach Coalition funding. It's always been at five since I've been.
Okay, okay, maybe Lynn can tell us. And then I'm, I'm pleased to, to hear that the Civic Spark fellow, you have good things to say about, I mean, that was the first time that we tried that internship program through that organization. And I know there was some concern about interns maybe not being able to pull their weight and causing more work for staff sometimes. And so I didn't hear that we were, we were necessarily going to look at additional Civic Sparks fellows. You talked about potentially hiring for another year the person we have now.
Correct.
Right, but would we, could we consider looking at other fellows? They, I, I was looking back at their website. The other, one of their other main focuses is on affordable housing. And so it's, it's possible that we could get another very qualified fellow, you know, for a, I think, I think they only charge something like $40,000 a year or for 11 months, you know, to help with the, some of the significant work that the planning department is doing, a lot of which relates to affordable housing and the housing element in the next year. That was a question, I guess we're not deliberating yet. I'm just asking if that's something that we're considering or could consider.
Well, it's council's policy decision. So if you hear your direction today, we will definitely consider it.
Well, I think this is where we, we, we would appreciate hearing from you all how, how that relationship has gone and, and.
Well, the partnership with Civic Spark was very successful. And I know Elizabeth can probably collaborate on this one too. So that's why we developed this as a strategy to continue doing this work with individuals who is already trained and already deep in the project. But we definitely can consider additional partnership.
Yeah, so I think regarding Civic Spark, there was a, some, there was a learning curve going through their process with them that Ms. Brooks could probably talk to. We sorted through that. It's, it's always challenging and difficult when you're sort of, the agency, they hire the intern for us to use, but we want to be the ones that are selecting the intern. So there's a relationship that's complicated there. I think we worked through some of that. I, I don't know how, how that would be. I don't know anything about the affordable housing focused one. I, I think what we would, that's certainly one resource. Planning may be aware of many other resources that exist along that same topic for interns or assistants, professional assistants that, that, so we would, you know, as part of this strategy, and again, I want to emphasize that these are preliminary strategies, pretty high level. There's not a lot of detail in there because we don't have the detailed budget numbers analyzed yet to be able to say what we can afford or don't think we can afford. But looking at fellowship programs like Civic Spark for other topic areas or other resources that exist that staff can locate and identify in particular departments to help is what, what we really want to be focused on. In addition to, I should say, you know, when we do come back with budget recommendations, if, if we do have bandwidth ideally to add new permanent staff, that's always the best for. for, for recruitment purposes. Um, but there's a, you know, ongoing financial obligation to that. So we have to consider it very closely.
Thank you. Um, and then, and then just um, I think we've talked about this a little bit as a council, but I'm not sure the public understands um your um, shoot, was, I forgot what strategy number that was, but the bud, the budgeting for salary savings and you mentioning that that was a little bit risky. Um, so could you flesh that out a little bit? So um.
Sure.
Yeah.
Uh, so currently, when we budget salaries and benefits for, for the whole city, we, we build some assumptions. So when we have vacant positions, we typically build them, we'll budget them at top step because we don't want to be short, not knowing who, who our uh incoming employees are going to be. So, and so on, those assumptions kind of exist, like how we, we do budget benefits for healthcare and things like that. So budgeting salary savings, given that we do have a very high turnover rate every year, year after year after year, uh, what we are proposing and we discussed it well throughout the last year as well, when we were considering uh labor uh packages, is risky but well, acceptable strategy moving forward, especially when you have budget challenges. So we know that we will have some salary savings. And the budgeting for them in a sustainable way, so I'm talking about like between three to five, not more than five percent, well, again, we'll have to flesh it out down the road, is uh, will provide this additional resource that we desperately need. And again, it's not ideal way of budgeting. It's uh, but it's one of the strategies that we can consider utilizing.
Just to summarize, so we're, we have these open positions that we're not able to hire for immediately. So we're borrowing money that we would have been paying in those positions to fund other positions or programs in the meantime.
So the way, practically, the way it will work, we will budget all positions and we will budget all current employees and we will budget all step increases that for all employees that will eligible to receive one. And then, when we figure out what this number is, we will build in a reasonable salary savings to achieve this goal throughout the year. And that's why I said we need to review it every year at mid-year to see are we on target here or not? Because it will, we would have to pivot if by some kind of miracle, nobody leaves, nobody retires and uh.
Yeah.
And all, everybody.
In an ideal situation, that money is not available. That's, that's the risk. Right? Okay.
Yeah. If I may, said another way is that the, the risk factor is that if suddenly in one year magically, we're completely staffed and no one is leaving, you know, then that's when you, you're confronted with having to take, make that adjustment at mid-year that year. So um, there's a prudent amount that we can achieve, I think.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'll start by dovetailing off of uh the question that Councilmember Bowles was asking, more of a statement really, because I could remember standing up there as a podium when I think then City Clerk Kathy O'Connell was speaking about how overwhelmed with um her obligations she was and speaking on behalf of the notion of interns to maybe help offset some of the staffing concerns we had during that time. And so I'm delighted that we're finding ways of utilizing interns and fellows that make sense in terms of helping us manage our workload. But my question is regarding strategy number two, the vehicle license fee and LOF fee or VLF. I understand that the conversation right now is whether or not we're going to receive the backfill that we're owed. I feel like some of this conversation is a further question mark about whether or not the state will be fulfilling their obligation to us in payment of that in LOF fee going forward. And so I just want clarity around how extensive that conversation is and if there's any um sense yet where that conversation with the state is going as we obviously would otherwise um budget for money that we're owed.
I don't have any specific updates about how it's looking for next year. That work is, is underway. Um, very uh, you know, specifically, uh, last week, we did send our comment letter, the mayor signed a comment letter about the impacts to Pacifica and the importance of that funding and was sent to all the appropriate legislative committees, et cetera. So that will work its way through. I think part of what's behind this strategy is that because that's still evolving, we don't want to cut ourselves short and say, oh, well, we can't, we can't, we, we need to make do without that money that the state owes us. Because then that, in, in one sense, that hurts our negotiating position. Um, but in another sense, we have tools, the, you know, reserves that we use that in the future, if indeed it's confirmed that the state is not going to meet their obligation, then we make those decisions at that time. But, but to come forward and recommend service cuts or position cuts uh in this budget when we don't know yet whether that backfill is not going to happen, doesn't seem like the right way to approach our budget for the next year, to me.
Certainly bear that in mind next week when I'm in Sacramento with FaceTime with more than just Josh, Diane, and Mark.
Any more questions? Okay. Then we'll go to public comment. We do have a card. Um, Lynn?
I want to first thank you for the sponsorship we have had, the $5,000. Um, it shows a commitment on your part to what we're doing. And um, all that we're doing is not for us, it's for us. It's for the city of Pacifica. It's for the environment. It's for climate change, for fighting climate change. Um, I, I, I think the results speak for themselves, and I've spoken it before, but 44,000 pounds of trash, 12,000 volunteers um last year alone. Seventy-five to ninety percent of those volunteers have come from outside of Pacifica. So the economy that they're bringing to Pacifica is really good. But they're also going home to create less trash and pick up litter, hopefully, and hopefully help us in our reduction of plastic overall in the rest of the Bay Area. So the bay trash is going to be less, we hope. The sponsorship uh is, is targeted toward uh and, 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 and get your advertisement on the poster, the Earth Day poster, but it also provides us help throughout the year. It's a very small amount of our annual budget. COVID has changed things. We're not able to do what we've been doing with volunteers as it is. So we are in need of having and hiring people to do different things. Our budget is growing significantly. And we need your support. We also need your commitment. And we know you have commitment, but nothing shows better commitment than putting your money where your mouth is. So I want you to know that um, the next level of sponsorship is $10,000. But we're really welcoming any amount. If 10,000 is fine, we'll, we, we the best money you could ever spend is with the Pacific Beach Coalition, to be honest with you. I don't know that you can get more bang for your buck, your buck, and that the community is behind what you're spending that money on. So um, I, I just want you to know that not only is it Earth Day, it's two citywide cleanups, Earth Day and Coastal Cleanup Day. It's thousands of stewards daily that are outside changing, picking up as they go. Um, it also is bringing all these people to Pacifica who are helping and sustaining our economy. So, thank you. Thank you for any sponsorship that you can give us. And if it can grow, we would certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth? Is there anyone online?
There are no raised hands. Mayor?
Thank you. So seeing no other people commenting from the public, I'll bring it back to council for deliberation. No lie.
To, to maybe help the, the conversation, of course, mayor's prerogative on how to go about this. But if, if you did want to take uh, you know, each strategy in, in order, that might be one way to do it. Um, also, if there were any comments or questions or concerns about uh the, the first part of the presentation related to timeline or methodology, we would want to hear that. But, you know, mainly, we want to hear uh in, input on the strategies tonight.
Tiger?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And um, point is not lost on me that chronology might be a helpful approach to tackling this. But I did um, I believe here Councilmember Beckmeyer said that she had comments around strategy number three, and I was inspired by hearing Lynn speak a moment ago. Um, we increased PRC substantially last year. And uh, not that I wouldn't like to have a blank check to hand them at every occasion. It strikes me that much as we had not raised PRC, the contribution we make to them in many, many moons. Um, you know, for as long as I've been attending council meetings, I think the contribution from the city to Pacific Beach Coalition has been $5,000. And I think that adding an extra $5,000 onto that is a relatively modest increase. Um, so I just want to throw that out there for discussion, especially recalling that before pandemic, um, I think these funds are largely used for the big event of the year. And I remember stilt walkers and bands and aside from it being this major focal point for the community to get together to do the right thing for the earth and an opportunity for education, it was also an event. And given the cost of rise of everything, I think that that's a modest increase to maybe make this an event as it was and beyond. I'm regretful I won't be able to attend Whalefest this year and hoping to talk to the powers that be for this other event so that the two don't conflict next year. So just putting that out there for discussion.
Can I comment on that one?
Yes.
Is that okay? Um, I absolutely agree with you. And I'll, I'll give you a little comparison. So we just had our annual youth summit, and it cost us $13,800 to do a youth summit. And so take that into consideration while we're talking about the Beach Coalition. And I think it's a good idea to increase theirs.
I support that fully too. Um, and I, I did ask, so you're, the money for the Beach Coalition and the Resource Center is all part of the um ERAF fund. So I don't know if I know what that stands for, but it's educational, extra educational funds that we get from the state, but the number varies year to year a little bit. Is that good enough? So um, and the estimate for this year is 3.4 to 3.7 million. So most of that money goes into the disaster accounting and affordable housing, um, which I support both fully also. Um, but I think it's, it's easy to find another 5,000 to support the wonderful work that, that you and the Beach Coalition do.
Okay, here I go. Um, in, in that same vein, I know I didn't start at number one. I'm on number three. Um.
Work backwards.
Yeah, but you started on three. So I'm going to continue on three. And I agree that the $10,000 for um, for the Beach Coalition is warranted. But I also think that Fogfest, which brings massive numbers of people into our town, um, they are an all-volunteer organization. They do have one paid person who does all the bookkeeping and the, the things that need to be paid for. But it is an all-volunteer organization. And um, I understand that the city did give them some money a couple of years ago. Um, but I would like to ask for $10,000 to be put in to the budget for Fogfest. So I think it's an important for, an important event for our community also. I was going to ask for more. So.
Oh, Sue has her hand up. But can I just comment real quick, Sue?
Yes.
Go to you. So I, I agree about the Fogfest. And I know we're thinking about additional additional nonprofits. Of course, I think of Pride, but I think Fogfest is in the, is in more need right now. And we can talk about Pride another year. But um, I do agree with about the Fogfest.
And just to confirm, we did, we did give Fogfest a fair amount of money last year that we wrote off, some debt, 30,000 or, or so, I think.
From '22.
Yeah, cor- correct. The, the public safety dollars from the, was it last year or the year before?
From '22.
In, in, in our discussions since that budget year had closed. And there was some some confusion in, in the, the whole communication process. So we've uh, in, in essence, forgiven that. And it, I think it was third.
Twenty twenty-two, yeah.
How much?
It was close to 40, I believe.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-four.
Yeah, yeah, something in that range.
Sue Beckmeyer?
Thank you. Um, I uh do want to support the idea of support being Fogfest. And I did have in mind a higher figure than 10,000. Um, I think, uh, thank you, Councilmember Beer, because I was thinking about Pride as well. And I wasn't sure where that fit in to this, this calculus right now. Um, I do believe that the Fogfest Board is undergoing its restructuring and it's um tightening its belt, figuring out how to grapple with rising costs. And every organization, the city of Pacifica included, has rising costs. So um, I'm impressed with the work they've done so far. Um, and I would propose, and the, the, I don't know, you know, the ins and outs of it exactly, but it seems like, since we don't have a process, back to the city manager's comment, uh, it sounds like we need to think about making some kind of grant perhaps to these organizations. I'm not really sure the right mechanism um for a city um to go ahead and make these allocations to nonprofit organizations. So that's something I'll trust the city manager and the assistant city manager to help us with. The figure I had in mind for Fogfest was $25,000. And I would propose perhaps some kind of looking at timing and looking at thresholds of how they're doing on their own. Um, Councilmember Bowles brings up that he did get some funds in the past and that those books are closed. So it's not like they have those funds any longer. Um, and that was an unusual situation, not the least of which owed to the fact that the city had some billing issues with the Fogfest. So I feel like we should discuss it as a, a group, but I wanted to put that out there. And knowing that it sounds like we could consider Pride in a future year, um, I would support the Beach Coalition ask. Um, I will say I did look up their um publicly available 990 form, and they are in the black um over the last two years. They, you know, they need to build up because they are their own 501(c)(3) at this point. Um, so I think I would propose that we not plan to make that an annual increase uh at this point in time. I do believe it's overdue for the Beach Coalition, but I also think they're doing pretty well in their fundraising, which is great because that's what we want to see happen. Um, so that's what I would like to contribute to, the item number three. So that's what I would like to contribute to, the item number three, conversation.
Tiger.
I have some trepidation about adding nonprofit onto the list in perpetuity. But I appreciate that Fog Fest has been reconfiguring itself recently and finding its way into the new era. And I'm, by the way, not necessarily opposed to funding beyond this year. Just after that last conversation we had around nonprofits, I feel like I have to voice the concern. And would certainly feel comfortable having the discussion for the next, however long I may be to have the discussion, if that's, or, you know, would recommend the discussion be had for the next year or two or three to see where the arithmetic falls. I would recommend that. And so within the context that it's coming out of ERAF, which is one-time funding, and it's something that's that important to our community, I have no problem with either figure that's been brought up this year and would recommend to future councils to have that discussion for at least the next foreseeable future to determine what consistency will look like going forward past this year.
Mary.
Thank you. I think the reason why I didn't bring up Pride was because of the discussion that we had the last time about having a grant program being run through the city and how that would just open up the floodgates to bring all of these applications in when we don't have a lot of money to be giving out in the first place. So I think that's where my trepidation was about having any kind of grant program. And so like the one-time gifts, I think, are appropriate this year. And, and again, that's why I didn't ask for another, like for Pride. Pride's decided to do a car parade this year, so it really reduced our fees a lot. And we are, you know, fundraising pretty well. So not that, it wouldn't be great to have buy-in from the city, but we can, we can offer that another time.
Christine.
Yeah, I'm, I have trepidation about adding something long-term. And I'm not opposed to giving the Fog Fest some money. I think I'm, I'm more inclined to, to the 10,000 that our mayor mentioned. I think it's an organization that's, that's struggling and that we need to support. And certainly, you know, the residents are supporting and stepping up. But it doesn't, it doesn't feel right to, to give a new one that's that much more than the Beach Coalition that has been active in our community all year round. So anyway, I feel, feel a little bit, little bit odd there. And I do think that there, there, I disagree with, with Sue. I think the Beach Coalition's funds should be, should be raised in perpetuity to 10,000 as, as we have the PRC in the past. So I think, and it's, you're looking at their financial records for last year. The financial records for this year are very different. They've had to hire an executive director. They're, they're struggling as an organization in their leadership. And their reorganizing, reorganizing, have redone their nonprofit status, are, are, you know, have hired someone part-time to help fill that gap because Lynn is killing herself, literally, with all that she's doing. And so, so that money is really needed and appreciated. And it's also a statement of our support for the organization. I mean, Daly City also gives them 5,000, and they only have one cleanup site in their town. So I think, I think being, being ahead of that curve and having our name higher on the list for an organization that does so much in our town is really important. So I, I don't know what you all think about Fog Fest. We haven't really, and I'm not opposed to giving some money to Pride either. Again, it's, it's more than the actual money. It's the, it's the statement that we're making that we support this organization, that these are important things that we value here in our town.
Tiger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I do see that Mayor Protam has her hand raised also, so I'm going to make my comment brief. I agree that 10,000 to Pacific Beach Coalition in perpetuity, I think, makes sense from my angle. After that, I think that I'm comfortable with what might wind up being a one-time contribution of 25 to Fog Fest because of how many organizations that they do help. And that's what kind of feels counterintuitive, is we're giving money to an organization that gives money to organizations. And yet, I think that's why we need to make sure that through this transition period, they're stable. And why I'm expressing a little bit of a concern, almost a hesitancy, to a long-term plan of keeping that amount of money in the budget. But I think that to get them over a hump makes sense in terms of how many different organizations that they support. And so I'll leave it there.
Mary.
I did not have my light back on.
I'm going to say something before you, Sue. One of, one of the issues with Fog Fest is that the, this was necessary, but the budget for the Pacifica Police Department went from about 22,000 to 35, to 45, or possibly more. It was necessary because of what happened in Gilroy, and they were understaffed. But because of changes to the committee itself, they were just caught unawares that that was going to happen. And there were major changes, and they didn't know that. So I think the 25 would be great, because it would really help them a lot. And like I said, they are trying really hard to do additional fundraising. They are the wrong 501(c), and they're working on that, too. They're not a (c)(3). They're a (c)(7), which is incorrect. So whoever started that did it incorrectly. Like I said, it's all volunteers, and it's difficult because people have other things, too. But I think the 25 would be great. And Sue Beckmeyer.
I just want to clarify a couple of terminology. And when I said I wasn't interested or didn't, I was concerned about perpetuity for the Beach Coalition, I didn't mean perpetuity. I am okay with perpetuity. I didn't want to imply increasing it year over year over year. I do think, you know, we're overdue for increasing the Beach Coalition. But we also see that their fundraising is improving. And as a 501(c)(3), they are receiving corporate donations, understandably, when they have corporations coming and doing beach cleanups as one feature of their program. So I think their structure is a little bit different than the Fog Fest. And I want to endorse and agree with the rising cost of public safety on Fog Fest and public works as well. And it's, you know, it is what it is. Our city's designed the way it is. There's a certain amount of streets that have to be closed for a parade that's a mile long. It's not anyone's fault. It is just the reality. So it's an expensive event to, to put on. But it's, you know, we've heard impassioned comments from the community over time, from former mayors from decades ago, and others who have been supporting this organization and what it brings to the community. So I, and so, that's why I proposed 25. Then, to address the issue of grants, I'm not suggesting that I want to do a grant program in the way in which it was proposed. But what I do think we need to have is a clear understanding of how taxpayer-funded organization creates a situation where it makes gifts to nonprofits. And to my understanding, grants are things that we can do. Now, what is the process? From my understanding, it's the three Ds: discuss, deliberate, and decide. It would be good if we had maybe a more robust conversation, but since we're where we are on the schedule for this year's budget cycle, this is it. This is the process, or having a discussion about it. So that's, that's what I want to say to that.
Well, then shame on me for not asking for money for Pride. You know, let's throw that, throw it into the ring then, you know? I had told, you know, said I wasn't going to ask, but if we're getting there, then we might as well throw $5,000 to Pride.
It's perfectly, we're having a conversation, so let's have it.
If I may just chime in regarding timing real quick, the, because Councilmember Beckmeyer, I mean, Mayor Protam Beckmeyer had raised the question about, you know, well, how is fundraising going, et cetera? Just a reminder that council is not making this decision and approving this budget until the end of June. And so, you know, we don't need, I'm hearing interest in some at least one-time funding for Fog Fest. Council doesn't have to settle on the amount tonight. You know, we still have to go through and work all the detailed numbers. And again, as I mentioned, you know, are we in a structural deficit situation this year? Are we not? You know, and what can we afford or not? That's part of the future budget deliberations. And so the specific amount can be decided in the future. But at least we know and have in our head the interest of, well, maybe it's a 25,000 figure for Fog Fest. The, the other point that I do want to remind the council about regarding Fog Fest is that they still owe us half the amount of the public safety bill from this last year. So we had deferred that payment with them. So they do owe the money, they do, still owe the city that money. And Ms. Carter, is that, how much is that? Is it? Anyways, we don't necessarily need to have this, the specific figure, but sort of, there's a lot of interesting dynamics regarding that. But we don't have to decide that tonight. I'm hearing the interest from the council.
Have we offered a payment plan, or is there?
That is the payment plan. Yeah, they've, they've paid us half, and the other half is owed.
Yeah, we, we offered them a payment plan, and the second half is about 20,000, 20,781. So that's.
And when is, when is, or was that due?
It's going to be due by November 30, 2025.
Oh, okay. So after this current Fog Fest, when there will be more expenses due? Okay.
Yeah, then they'll owe more.
Yeah.
Okay. So, okay. So we did present what we thought on that item, but we'll go back to number one, where we are going to start. And would anyone like to discuss strategy number one?
Sure. I mean, I, I agree with all these funding interns and fellows, additional contract planning services. We definitely don't have enough capacity in our, in our planning department. But I, I think, I did want to ask, actually, you talked about that being reimbursable by private applicants, and I know that's some of their work. But there's also a lot of work on the local coastal plan and the housing element and so forth. So I'm assuming not everything is reimbursable.
Well, it depends on the specific projects, right? So I can't.
Okay. But, but here you're only asking for reimbursed, or for contract planners for reimbursable services.
Right, so what we did last year, we funded additional consulting hours. And most of those hours would be presumably reimbursable by private development. So that's, we just continue.
And I'm, okay, I'm sorry. I'm still just concerned that we don't have enough help for our planning staff. So, but they will be coming to us at a later meeting and telling us the staffing levels that they need to meet the goals that we have put in front of them, right?
Well, as City Manager said, that these are just preliminary strategies. So this is not the full list of recommendations for the upcoming budget. Yeah, we definitely will be developing more recommendations.
Okay. Yeah, and then I, I trust you on the salary savings and keeping an eye on that personally.
I don't have any issues with number one.
Neither do I.
All good.
All good, Sue?
I'm good. I, I'm wondering if there are other organizations besides Civic Spark. I mean, I'm not wondering. I'm, I'm thinking there may be. I guess that's wondering, in regard to affordable housing. It's such a hot topic. It seems like there may be other opportunities. Because I, I guess what I'm worried about is, we already have, we've received a Civic Spark fellow, and I don't know if we could get another one, or, you know, we have to get in line or something like that. But in general, I support the idea of, of having a fellow or a couple of them to augment staff. And, you know, I know we still have to hear back, I still, oh, no, that bleeds over into strategy two. But I do, I guess what I want to say is, I do support the salary savings strategy and that I know that everyone will be keeping a close eye on those, those budgets and informing the council if it looks like that is, the risk that was brought forward is emerging. Let me say that. And then I'll add something on, I guess, related to that, back on strategy two.
Go ahead.
If I can just answer, just to follow up on what you had said about the Civic Spark. When I was first learning about the program last year, there are actually some cities that have, like, up to six fellows. So the program does allow it, for sure. And then, as I mentioned in my public comments earlier, I'm, I'm reaching out to Partnership for the Base Future because there may be, like you said, other, other sources of funding for affordable housing. So thanks for reminding us of that.
Okay. And on strategy two?
Well, on strategy two, I'm hopeful and looking forward to the, you know, eventual increase in our budget from the development impact fees. I expect, since we haven't looked at them for a very long time, we're going to see an increase coming to us or through that process, although that is a ways away. Same thing on cost allocation and other master fees. I feel like, I don't know, Mary, we got there at the same time. I feel like we've been hearing about master fee study since 2018. So I know it's overdue, and I know it takes a lot of time. But what's weird, it's almost like we don't have the staff to invest the time in a process that will help us bring more revenue to the city. And so I almost was thinking, you know, as we look at our ERAF funds, as we look at the amount that we, you know, we're just talking about, about the nonprofits, and then dividing the difference into our disaster accounting fund and our affordable housing fund. I mean, it's not, I don't want to be, like, hyperbole here, but there are times that I do feel like it's a disaster that our staffing is so thin. And we brought this forward as a number-one goal. You know, I don't want to burn out our staff. I don't want to lose them. And we'll be able to do more if we have more. So I'm not, you know, suggesting, I am the finance person who could answer this, but maybe we should be thinking about dipping into that for position. I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there.
Mayor Protam, are you suggesting a temporary position or a full-time position going forward?
Well, you know, I remember somebody being really critical about the temporary positions that we approved because they're, if I quote-unquote, "Yeah, temporary positions always become permanent positions." We all know that. And the reality is, we need the ongoing staff. So maybe a way to think about it is temporary initially, and then as we are investing the dollars into our profit for development impact fee study, cost allocation, master fee study, then revenues do start, you know, happening in such a way that that could be made permanent? I'm not sure. Maybe it's all semantics. But I think we need to, you know, I think we ultimately need the help on the ongoing basis, but maybe we get there with a two-year position. I don't know.
Madam Mayor, may I follow up?
Yes.
And I recall having made a comment around that discussion. I remember the comment. I remember the comments that you're speaking of. I'm not sure if it was just one person, but I think that as I was, my comments at the time were something to the point of, well, look, if we are well-disciplined in the practice, then it shouldn't be a problem. And I think that when I made those comments at that time, what I was thinking was, we have this full staff, and on top of our full staff, then we would add this temporary position for the one or two years or what have you. And my experience since sitting up here is that the idea of having a full staff and then having the problem about where to allocate money, boy, is that a problem I wish I've like ever had. Um, and so I, you know, happened to see a finance expert sitting across the room right over yonder, and I think that, um, your point is well-taken and that that's a great idea to throw into the mix. And I'd love to see what the result of that idea looks like, and largely my hunch is I would support it.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I feel like we need staff in so many departments that it's hard to, to say and prioritize. And, and I don't, don't really have a sense of how much money, um, you know, this is going to bring in, but it's going to take a little bit of study to know that. Um, I mean, I know we have, we have updated some of our fees recently, right? Specific ones. We did, we did the park fee, we did a roadway fee for, for trucks, maybe there was something else.
Trees and.
Um, a tree fee, right, as part of the ordinance. Um, yeah, I, I mean, I think this is, I've been saying this, I think this is really important, and especially as we're, um, you know, on the brink of maybe having a whole bunch of big housing projects and making sure that they're, they're paying for the actual infrastructure that we need, so that, you know, they're paying for it and not, and we're not pushing that cost off on our residents that are here now. So, um, so I, I do agree that that's a priority, and I, but I leave it to staff to, to decide whether actually funding a permanent application process or, or, um, or having a consultant help, you know, would be the best way forward.
Yeah, Mary.
I appreciate your innovative thinking, Councilmember Beckmeyer. Thank you for that. Yeah, and I would love to see what, what that could look like, so I, I would support that. Um, and then just, I'll just go backwards, because I'm fine with strategy two and I'm fine with strategy four, so.
So that, that was four, that we just, we just jumped to. So back to two?
Agreed.
Two was the, the vehicle license fee.
Yeah.
I think we're okay with that. We're, I'm okay.
Just keep your fingers crossed on that one, and hopefully we get money.
Yeah.
Like spending all this time thinking about the questions that I'm going to ask these people when I see them next week. VLF suddenly just shot to the top of my brain.
Yeah, yeah.
We got a room, we're going to like usher them in all day long or for a four-hour period or whatever. VLF, VLF, VLF.
Yeah. And that was good strategy thinking, Sue. Something I never, I didn't think about, of course. So I, I think it was an interesting strategy. I like it.
So five?
Five.
Five.
Um, that's the ERAF funding for affordable housing and disaster relief and for the nonprofits.
And wasn't that part of what you said, Sue, about maybe even the 50% balance towards the housing and loo fee could be spent, maybe that fee? Is that the specifics that you were talking about that could possibly go to hiring another person to look into, um, the other, the other, uh, fee schedules that we could use to maybe make that money later?
Right. Either that or adding it as a bullet and then doing our traditional dividing of the remainder between the two funds. I don't know what would be the right exact thing. That's why I'm putting it out there, thinking staff will be able to work on numbers and bring it back.
I like that. Assistant City Manager, at the last meeting, didn't we allocate a portion of the disaster accounting fund out to reinforce our mid-year budget? Are we expecting that from ERAF will be able to make that whole again? Um, and that, I mean, out of the 50%, that's currently on the bullet.
Well, that was, yeah, that's status quo recommendation in front of you right now, so.
I just wanted to make sure that that does make it whole. Um, I like, uh, Mayor Protem's idea of putting an additional bullet to support the idea and then seeing where the numbers fall from there.
Can I request some clarification, uh, Mayor Protem Beckmeyer or, or any council members? So you're, I want to make sure I'm following. Talking about a potential new limited-term position, suggesting, well, that could maybe be funded out of, uh, ERAF money that we get, but what I'm not clear on, was there a desired focus for that limited-term position?
Well, I leave it to you to tell us what you think, but I'm going to say, from where I sit, planning seems to be the area that is most besieged right now. In light of BRINA, general plan, LCLUP, uh, integrating the housing element and moving on, on zoning, which is going to be huge.
Yeah.
And then ultimately, whenever we are done with LCLUP, moving that forward into implementation plan. So those are the things that were in the front of my mind. I could, you know, stop talking about that and make as equally compelling a case for, um, public works in terms of our roads, road repair, our tree services. Um, so I leave it to you to decide where it would best be implemented, but that's what I was thinking.
Great. That, that helps. I, I guess what I would say is that, um, I think it was maybe many council member bowls mentioned it, but maybe others as well. I mean, we have, we have staffing needs in, in every department, uh, but just the concept related to number five, that this might be a year, or this year and next year, might be a year to carve out funding for a two-year limited-term position. That helps a lot as we look at our staffing needs and the priorities, and we put the information to bring back to council for the next budget discussion. So I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And, and, and that's a future, sort of, where the priority positions are, um, that we're going to allocate money towards is part of the future budget discussion.
Yeah. If, if I can just add to that.
Mayor, um, so I'm definitely okay with, with the study, and, and I agree, we have needs all over our staff. Um, when, when you first brought that up, Sue, I thought it was really in terms of working on the fee schedule, which would then bring more money to the town. So, so that's another place in finance, you know, and, and the groups that are, that are working on that, where that, that might be able to, to help. My, my only concerns, um, sorry, go ahead, if you want to.
I just, uh, the reason I wasn't thinking that, what I was, my, when I made that statement, I was thinking it would tide us over while the process of doing the master fee study, the cost allocation study, et cetera, rolls forward. Uh, I know we're going to need consultant help for that, but my impression from what Assistant City Manager was saying in the presentation earlier tonight is that this is one of those things that involves a lot of regular staff, um, as well as the consultant.
Gotcha.
So I don't, anyway, I'm not sure how practical that is, um, as a solution, but I was in, expecting that doing it is going to result in more funds coming to the city in the long run.
Right. Thank you. That, that makes sense. Um, so my, my, so my two concerns, and I was asking, um, um, you know, in my, in my questions that I sent in earlier, like what is a good amount for the disaster accounting fund? Because we haven't had a major disaster in a while, right? And, and what I, what I see is that we keep using the disaster.
Storm.
Okay, yeah, storm. Okay. I'm sorry, you're right. But, but not, but not really major, like if you think of an earthquake that's all over town, or the storm was bad here in certain areas, but like think about 1982, when it was flooded everywhere and six feet of water in Lindemar and, you know, people's houses fell down. Um, we're going to have another big disaster. Right? So I just want to make sure, and then, and then what I've seen is that we use the disaster fund a lot during the year for tree removal and things like that, you know, because we don't have other funds. But I, I just, I'm really worried that we're going to have a big disaster, and I want to make sure that we have what we need, you know, when, when that happens. Um, and, and, you know, we're talking about some studies in Manor and the Bluffs, and there, there really could be a disaster, you know, in the next few years. So, so just really being mindful that we, that we keep enough money aside for, for real emergencies where we need that money immediately. Um, and then the housing and loo fund, I know that's something new that we added last year, and, you know, it's part of our priority, prioritizing building affordable housing, which, you know, we really haven't done in, in 30 years. But we also need to remember that this is part of what we're, what we have promised to HCD, and if we're not meeting our housing goals, they're going to be coming down on us with enforcement, and that is going to be happening in a few years. And, and it takes a long time for those projects to get going. And so I think we need to be really careful about starting to spend that money, too.
Yeah. If I may, Mayor, on that point?
Yes.
Um, I saw that question, uh, regarding, you know, if we have a major disaster and we need that money. I wanted to ask the Assistant City Manager and City Manager in general, in the event of a significant major disaster, what is the city's, um, ability? I understand, because we talked about it, I think, at the last council meeting, uh, well, that money's there to be used in, immediately, even though we were pretty darn sure we'll get funding through FEMA or CALOES or somebody like that. Um, is there, I mean, if worst-case scenario, we needed funds right now, is there a way that we borrow? Do we leverage? Like, what do we do? And maybe that's not for tonight, maybe that's for you to bring back when you bring back all this stuff in the next, uh, discussion about the budget.
Yeah, I, I could just say, I, I mean, I think it's, it's a hard question to answer, because it really depends on what the disaster is. So certainly in any kind of major regional disaster, there, there will be state, federal funding that helps. Um, the, we have various reserves and, you know, we have the disaster accounting fund that, that is available to help for an immediate repair of something. Uh, our, our various reserves help in the need of immediate, uh, organizational continuity if, 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 if funding was disrupted and we still need to pay employees who are doing the work. So we have reserves for all that. So it's, it's a hard question to sort of blanketly answer, um, because it really does depend on what the disaster is. Now, the, the Fund 38 Disaster Accounting Fund, I believe, has a seven to eight million dollar balance in it, and that's fairly healthy for, um, some kind of immediate capital repair of something. Um, but I guess that's all I could say at this point, and if Ms. Carter has more to add.
Well, I don't really have more to add. I completely agree. It depends what kind of emergency and disaster we are talking about. Uh, and yes, we do have, well, our audit at the fund balance and disaster accounting fund is 7.5 million. Um, again, with additional allocation at 50% of ERAF, we're looking at, well, increasing this balance, obviously. Uh, and yes, it is sufficient balance for, well, normal course of disasters we've been dealing with in the last, like, few years. And again, given to, uh, Councilmember Beckmeyer's statement that we will essentially get reimbursement from other, from state and federal agencies, so this is kind of the money that we front and submit for reimbursement that will go back to the fund. So that's the whole idea of creating this fund to begin with. And I also want to point out that many agencies, well, many cities cannot afford standalone disaster accounting fund, so that, that's the fact, too. So it, it works both ways. So some agencies just allocate portion of the general fund balance for this purpose. And that's the prudent decision that the Pacifica Council and the City Manager made to start building this resource, so we are in pretty, well, good shape, just considering and continuing these practices.
Um, just a quick follow-up. So about how long does it take to get reimbursed from FEMA or, or others after a disaster? Because we're.
Well, yeah, it could be a couple of years. I think Director Peterson, Public Works Director Peterson could probably speak to the timeline, but we're, uh, agencies are still waiting for FEMA funding for, from the storm impacts from the previous winter's storm.
Yeah.
So it can take a while.
Uh, Madam Mayor, the time is 10:46. I don't know if we want to.
I think that we're going to finish. Okay. So.
Did we give all the direction that staff needs?
Did we give all the direction that staff needs?
I think so.
I think we went through each point.
Yeah. Got direction on all those strategies and.
Okay. So in not continuing, it is currently 10:47, and I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.
Night, Sue.
Night, Sue. Have a fun.
Night.
I'm not, I kept looking at the time. I was watching.